Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Suffolkin.
Here.
Alderman Ravel.
Here.
Great, we have eight of our city council members here. Alderman Winn had a long planned absence from this meeting. So, welcome everyone to the last city council meeting of 2017. This is the Monday, December 11th, 2017 meeting. I have, I think all of my colleagues up here will be happy, I have no public announcements or proclamations, other than a happy holiday, a happy Hanukkah, upcoming Merry Christmas, happy Kwanzaa, all of that to everybody here in Evanston. So with that, city manager, I know you have a couple of public announcements this evening.
We are here this evening to start with recognizing two long-serving employees as they leave the organization. And I'd first like to bring up Ricky Voss, our parking manager. Ricky?
Ricky is a long-serving employee of the City of Evanston. He started on April 14th, 1980, as a police officer. Just in case you're wondering, this makes him the third longest-serving employee that we have. He came here after the Vietnam War, after a distinguished military career, to try something different, and served in the police department, rose to the rank of sergeant in 1996, and retired from the police department in 2004. He spent a lot of the last parts of his time in the police department doing traffic, so it was perhaps not an unusual transition for him to move over to Public Works. And at that point, parking was part of that, and he began his work as a parking enforcement supervisor in November of 2004, became the interim parking manager in 2007. The parking manager, later in December 2007, we added revenue to his cast of responsibilities in 2012. We added Fleet, but took away revenue in 2015, and has been the Fleet and Parking Manager since April of last year. You all know, Ricky, it's difficult to describe exactly what Ricky has brought to the City of Evanston. He and I had a chance to talk a little bit this afternoon, and I think the one word that came out was nuance. That Ricky understands Evanston. Ricky understands the challenges that Evanston residents face. And as the parking manager, you've heard more than your fair share of residential challenges, between leaves and snow, and all the signs that we have for all of our various parking regulations. But Ricky's always brought that nuance to it. He understood the people's pain. He worked first and foremost to try to solve a problem. He was not your usual bureaucrat to say, "Here's the code section, here's how you have to deal with it." Ricky always tries to find a way to come to a solution. Many of you would contact Ricky for problems and challenges that residents would bring to you, and I know from talking with all of you, there was always that nuance. There was always that, well Ricky's going to figure out a way to mine the law, but also make sure the residents get what they need. In the last several years, since I've been city manager, I've really relied on Ricky to do a variety of things. He helped with a review of our Public Works Department a few years ago, took on responsibilities, most recently with Fleet, an area that although we all know Ricky loves two things, other than his wife and dear family, and that's motorcycles and Disney. So, the Fleet part was probably an easy switch for him to take on in these last few years. But Ricky, on behalf of your colleagues here with the City of Evanston, we wanted to take this moment and say thank you. You make Evanston Evanston. You know, all the things that people look to in this community, that say is valuable and important, you have personified. And you've used that nuance of yours, that very grin you have on your face right now, and that confident look, to not only help me, to help all your fellow staff, help members of the council over the years, you have really helped make this community what it is. So, it is with great gratitude and a fair amount of sadness that I present with you this plaque. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm going to try to make this short, and normally you know I'm very long-winded. Honorable Mayor Hagerty, Mr. Bob Kowitz, Members of the Council, Clerk Reed. For the last time, Ricky Voss, Fleet Services, Administrative Division. It's been a privilege. I mean, I said this the other day at my little going-away party, to grow up in Evanston and then serve the very community you grew up in for 37 years, is an honor. To be able to work with everybody that I've had a chance to, the mentors on the council, Mr. Bob Kowitz, Mr. Lyons, and many others that have gone before me, has been tremendous. Without their support, without this help, this city would not be where it is today. And I've seen it, growing up here, go through its peaks and valleys, and fortunately, we've seen it start to go into their peaks now. We're seeing a redevelopment, which is only a tribute to the council and to staff members. And I've always said, "I'm only as good as my staff," and they have been truly supportive of everything I've done. So with that, though, there's one person in the family here that I have to remember, if I didn't have their support, I wouldn't have been able to do it. My lovely bride of 46 years.
Oh.
My kids, and one of my grandchildren, and a good-sounding boy. You know, my wife had to spend a lot of nights where I was never home. Maybe that's a good thing for her. I don't know. Maybe in 30 days from now, I'll see the want ads on my phone that says, "No, you need to go." But without their support, and without everything here, I would not have been, nor would the city be successful. I think it's been a lot of fine work, and I'd like to thank everybody. I'd like to thank the council. I'd like to thank the residents, the very residents that we support. I think it's very important. So, again, thank you very much. It's been a privilege, and it's been a definite honor over the past 37 years.
Ricky, Ricky, Ricky. Thank you, Ricky. I know Alderman Wilson has one thing, and then Mr. Bob Kowitz will come to you.
Ricky, I just wanted to, Ricky? Hold on, Ricky. You just stay there. I do just want to extend a personal thanks to Ricky, but also to your family for sharing the time that you could have been spending with them, with us, for all of these years. As a new council member, eight years ago, I'm no longer a new council member, but I very quickly realized that you were somebody that I could turn to, to solve problems, not just, whatever your title was, you were always there for me when I had a question about something. And, you know, jumping into this job, as our new council members know, there's a lot you don't know. There's a lot of context that you don't know. And there were many times when you were able to be the person who was there for me, and I'm very grateful for that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ricky.
And last, we have one other employee to recognize, Mr. Martin Lyons. Mr. Lyons? As you all know, the Aurora City Council and their mayor recently appointed and confirmed Mr. Lyons as the new Chief Financial Officer and City Treasurer for the City of Aurora, Illinois, second-largest city. Marty has been with us for nine-and-a-half years, as Finance Director, Chief Financial Officer, and I think as many of you have said over time, you know, the impact of Marty's work has been substantial. The financial circumstances of the City of Evanston, I think, have generally always been strong, but I think under Marty's leadership and stewardship, I think we've been able to go to a different level. I think we're looking more carefully, really across the board at our finances. We've been looking very thoughtfully at our enterprise funds, looking very thoughtfully at investments of infrastructure. And in a community like Evanston, it's difficult. You know, our official motto, "Progress without change," is not what a finance guy wants to hear. He wants to know that there's dollars behind it. He wants to know that good investments are being made. He wants to know that when he goes before Moody's and Fitch, if they get a bond rating, that this community, you know, is investing in itself, and is making sure that we are all being good stewards of the revenues and the dollars that the residents of Evanston entrust in us. And so Marty has done that. But Marty's done more than that. Marty's role as the Assistant City Manager, I think, has helped very much keep this organization on track. Marty's played key roles in many initiatives, including the reorganization of our Public Works Department a few years back. And most recently, he has been the great steward of our Robert Crown project, something that this community has had as an aspiration for many, many years, and Marty is helping make a reality. And so, the legacy that Marty leaves, not only in the investment and the good fiduciary responsibilities and practices of the city, but also the investment of the future with Robert Crown, it will be a legacy that he leaves as this project moves forward that will serve generations of Evanston residents. So, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, it's my pleasure, Marty, to give you this plaque. You have been a tremendous partner personally and professionally for me, over the eight-and-a-half years that we have been together here in Evanston. Your departure is a loss for all of us, for myself personally and professionally. We wish you all the best in the future.
Thanks, Voss. It's a long meeting, and I know I don't, Ricky, once again, I'm speaking late after you and later in the night, but Ricky, it's always great to share the stage with you. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Clerk Reed, Wally, we have to say that one this time. It has been my honor to serve for these past 10 years. I've served with three councils, three mayors, not quite, just two clerks, because the one was acting. But this group is by far and away the most conscientious, yet efficient, group that I've ever served with. This council has, when I first came here, had regularly meetings until 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning. And the first time we've had a late one was in this last year, as a new council came on board and getting used to things. That's a big accomplishment for a council that has to do so much that you do. So, thank you very much for the trust that you have showed in me, as far as providing financial support to the city. I appreciate it immensely. As far as, I'd like to thank all of my staff who are here tonight. We've had a great budget team. We have great teams that have had to do some transition work. I was the Acting Economic Development, Community and Economic Development Director. So, I've met many, many folks here, so I apologize for not naming everybody by name. That being said, over the last four years, I will call out my executive assistant, Janelle Harden. And without her support over the last four years, I would not have been as, you know, as much of an organized individual, able to meet the demands of the city. So, Janelle, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And she is not the only assistant I've ever had. She is the best, and I mean that wholeheartedly. Lastly, Mr. Bob Kowitz, I've never been with the city manager longer than four years, and I've been in communities, I've never been in a community less than five. So, your leadership has been an integral part of my success. And without breaking up over anything, I'll go comedy. I'm not quite ready to say I'll miss those teachable moments, but that will come. And there'll be a time, within a year, where I will say, "I will miss those teachable moments." Thank you very much for all the support you've given me, and then thank you to the residents of Evanston. I've been able to have great conversations with so many people, who I was able to talk with about finance, who I was able to talk with about service, some of the best, right down at the collector's office when we're trying to get through a debate. But I appreciate them all for their commitment and their understanding of how hard it is to run this city. Thank you very much.
Alderman Fleming?
Well, I just want to say, Marty, real quick, I haven't been here, obviously, very long, but you have been so patient with me, who has no finance knowledge. Sorry, voters. But you have been so patient with me, meeting with me about the tiffs, and sitting down to explain spreadsheets to me. So I hope, Mr. City Manager, you find someone as patient as Mr. Lyons, and I will miss you, and I might call you when you're in Aurora.
We got two more here, Mr. Lyons. Mr. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Marty, I just want to give you my personal thanks. It's been an honor and privilege to work with you for the past six years. Not only have you assisted me, but by your support and the information, you've made not only the City of Evanston, but specifically the Second Ward. I appreciate the time that you've taken, I'm sure with all of us, as it relates to learning the budget. There will be a huge, huge, huge gap left when you leave. So, on behalf of myself, the residents of the Second Ward, the businesses in the West End, the MWEBE program that, once we had you as a staff member, really started to excel, I can't thank you enough, and I hope that we continue to stay friends, my friend. Thank you.
Alderman Fissick?
Oh, maybe Janelle can tell us this. I have never seen you angry, ever. I've never seen you lose your temper. I've never, I can't believe it. It's just, oh, well, okay, so we'll talk about that when you're gone, because you've certainly hidden that from the rest of us. No, Marty, you've just been a joy to work with, and this is not easy for any of us. I mean, we have, I mean, the questions that we have are so complicated. You've cheerfully taken on all the assignments that we've given you, in a way that is delightful. I just can't imagine anyone filling your shoes. I don't think that, I mean, you're going to be closer to home, but it's not going to be as nice as Evanston. So, you can always come back. But, I mean, everybody needs to know, I mean, Marty drove in two hours here, two hours home, I mean, for nine years, goodness sakes. I mean, that's more than any person should do, but he did it because he loves us, and we love him. And thank you, Marty, for everything that you've done for the city. I truly appreciate it.
City Clerk, do you have any communications?
Nope. No communication.
Okay, all right. We're going to turn to public comment. We have a little less than 20 people signed up for public comment. So tonight, let's go with two-and-a-half minutes per person. As usual, I'll give you a little nudge, if you're getting close to your two-and-a-half minutes. And as always, I appreciate everybody respecting the time. So, I'll rattle off the first three. Mike Fasilco is the first speaker tonight, and then we have Priscilla Giles, and then James Engelmann.
Mike Fasilco, 27, 28 Rees. I hope that citizen comments regarding the budget recommendations that we make are taken to heart, you know, that they're not a waste of our time. I haven't heard anything since the last meeting, where the budget was discussed in a lot of detail. I haven't heard the results of any of the conversations regarding the library, for instance, library renovation. There was some discussion about the Branch Library and the Crown Center. Haven't heard any results about Howard Street Theater budget being corrected for 2018, and the amount of about $250,000. So there are issues out there that I hope will be shared tonight as part of your discussions. I'm going to just say, I am in favor of you setting meeting times, start and stop times. It's great that you can start at 8:15, if you hold to that, and you should just go on for a couple hours and call it a night, get out of here by 10:30, something like that. I also wanted to take a minute and just make note to Alderman Wilson, you know, I made an issue of the Clerk's Office at the last, actually, it was via email, because we ran out of time for citizen comments the last time. And I've heard more about that from various people, gotten enlightened a little bit, so I want to apologize if I came on too strong for that, but I do want to see the Clerk's Office funded to the extent necessary for the work to get done, and I'd like to see the clerk do the work he's supposed to do. So I understand there were issues there, and I want to make sure it's taken care of on both sides. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mike. Priscilla Giles, then James Engelmann, then Janad Rizki.
Priscilla Giles, Fifth Ward. I don't think I speak ever the whole three minutes given for public comment, and I often stay until the meeting's over. But I do wonder if the council listens to the public, when I see so many vacant, underused offices here, when I see committees being combined to save money, and see employees placed on part-time or being dismissed, city services reduced, and large groups of citizens advocating for items, and the council voting against us. Are you really listening and taking into account what the public asks for and needs? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. James Engelmann, Janad Rizki, then Jason Sinicky. I apologize, as always, if I'm mispronouncing people's names. Hi, James.
Yeah, you didn't pronounce my name, my name, okay. I'm sorry. Please keep the library going, because I have 33 people living in my apartment, and half of them use the library. And mine is terrible, the entire race. And I would like to have the mobile, the library bill, come back again, because a lot of people cannot travel, so if they come to, over the rainbow, the real cares could go up on the ramp there. Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Great, thank you, James. All right. Next up, Janad Rizki, then Jason Sinicky, and then Barbara Bronson.
Very likely, if the council wants to face it, future budget increases here will be very dramatic. They will be in the range of 50 to 100 percent, and it's very painful for many people. Personally, if the money was well-spent, it would be good. I believe quite a bit of our budget, at least 5% to 10%, is purely waste, mismanagement and other problems here. Tonight, we've got a lawsuit of about $3.5 million. The previous meeting, we lost another million dollars because of a reorganization of departments and elimination of someone's job. These kind of things cost a lot of money, and they add to the taxes. We have all these projects and things going on here that are of no value to the taxpayers, and many of these things, you know, this is economic development, they're giveaways of our money. The things that we need are for the public. The public wants things like libraries, our parks, and these things seem to be highly neglected by this council. You know, there's no excuse if you can't read the budget or don't understand it, at least understand what the people need, and I think that's important. Frankly, we have many messes here, and we have a hidden budget here, where the city staff is using the budget whenever they want. They take it as $5,000 chunks, $10,000 chunks, up to $19,999, and nobody knows about it, and it's hidden. And that's misuse of our money, and we need to stop that, and this council needs to put it under control. But the reason it's not under control is because it aids council members in whatever they want, and that's what's going on here. The public needs, is going to have to start looking at this very closely. And finally, I realize there's many things that have been done here. I just realized, after, it's been a year since Smiley Brothers took a lease on Howard Street, down there in Oakton, rather, for the recycling center. Nothing's happened. We're in the process of, we spent engineering dollars to just start to build a parking lot. So, are we going to continue to waste money? If it doesn't appear they're going to do anything, they've got six months left. So what's going on here? The council ought to ask questions about our money, where it's going. That million dollars coming out of the parking fund that's going to build that parking we don't need, that might not be so good for the animal shelter, which you claim you're going to help in the next budget round. There are many things this council needs to take seriously with our money. We don't want it wasted, and I'm sorry to say, we have a lot of problems, and I could go on for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Janad. Jason Sinicky, Barbara Bronson, then Meg Walsh.
Let's see how I can do this, if you can all hear me. I have a pretty loud voice, anyway. This is my first meeting, so bear with me, I'm not going to talk too long. I live it over the rainbow with Jimmy. I know what the library means to the city, but also, I know what it means to me. I go there every single day. If I don't go every day, I don't feel like, you know, I'm complete, because I go every day. But totally, I strongly, strongly recommend passing an operating budget, because the services that they provide to the citizens of the city are unparalleled, and I don't know where I would be if I didn't have the library to go to, or to depend upon, or lean upon, and I thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Jason. Barbara Bronson, Meg Walsh, then Elliot Zaschon.
No, I'm Barbara Bronson, and I live right around the corner here on Noyes. And when I grew up here in Evanston, the library was like the Carlson Building across the street. They built a very nice new building. And now, I don't understand where they're going to put things, when they move, I guess the first floor is going to be up on the second floor while they work on that, and the second floor will come down to the first floor and join them while they work on that. Where do all the books go when they're doing this? Where does anything fit in now, when they try to work on it? And I have little things, like I'm at the Levy Senior Center, and there's a man who shows films, foreign films, all the time. He picks the DVDs up here at the library, and we have to keep continuing things like that. They have to be able to get in there, so don't close it up. Thanks.
Thank you, Barbara. Meg Walsh, then Elliot Zaschon, then Tricia Conley.
So, I'm here tonight to ask you, the council, you've received emails from me, and thank you, Alderman Simmons, for replying, to do an equitable cut to the Clerk's Office. And I'd also like to point out that there's beginning to be what appears to be a pattern of marginalization. It's what it looks like to some citizens. I've used the passport service after 7:00 PM. It's very convenient, there's nowhere else you can go. So I'm asking you for an equitable cut to the Clerk's Office. We elected him. We elected him because there's certain things that we would like him to accomplish. He's not going to be able to accomplish that with this kind of a cut. So, also, I would ask you to follow what the Plan Commission has recommended with 601 Davis. 601 Davis is not going to give the city the kind of housing that we need, which was moderately-priced housing for families. And I'd also like to say, I don't enjoy getting up here speaking. I worked from home today. I had to come out, clean my car off of snow. My teenager got her own dinner. I have anxiety every time before I stand up here, and so it's not, we're not doing this because we enjoy it. We care about the city, and so if we could get some, you know, appreciation, the citizens that are speaking up, instead of just, you know, resentment because you see us as being oppositional, we care about the city, and we're doing this out of conviction.
Thank you, Meg. Elliot Zaschon, Tricia Conley, then Dan Joseph.
Good evening. Elliot Zaschon, I live in the Ninth Ward. I'm an active member of an organization called Reclaim Evanston, and we worked rather hard to put Clerk Reed in office. He campaigned on issues of accessibility and transparency, and offered some very innovative solutions that would deal with those issues, and that was one of the reasons that we got behind him. We recommend that the council restore the funds so We recommend that the council restore the funds so that his cut in his office is no greater than percentage-wise and in the other departments. From what we've gathered, it doesn't appear that Clerk Reed had a chance to present a budget for himself based on the functions that he wanted to perform, and so he was, in effect, presented with a budget, and that discussion didn't occur, and now it's up to the council to have that discussion. I think he wanted to expand the functions of the Clerk's Office, and in order to do that, he needs a reasonable amount of funds. So I urge you again to restore the budget that would have existed if it was only four percent. This is a very important office for the city. I think people supported Clerk Reed when he ran, because they wanted to see more of this kind of activity. It's a change, but it's a change that's important, I think, for all of us, and I feel strongly that the council should take this action and make sure that he's in a position to do the kind of job he promised to do. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Elliot. Tricia Conley, Dan Joseph, then Doreen Price.
Good evening. I am Tricia Conley, and I am a District 65 school librarian. I am here tonight speaking to all of you about access to information and transparency. This is something librarians all over believe in, the freedom to read and the freedom to have access to information. First of all, I urge you all not to cut the budget to the city Clerk's Office by thirty-five percent. Make it an equitable cut with the other departments. If all of you truly believe in transparency, that is the right vote to make. The citizens of Evanston have spoken. We voted for Devon Reed because of his interest in expanding access to information to the people. So, please, your vote tonight really matters, and we're watching. Secondly, another asset to all of us in regard to access to information is our public library. In regard to the public library, I would say that if we want to be all about equity, the library is a service that is available to all Evanston citizens. It's a place where anyone is welcome. The librarians don't always, aren't always within the four walls of the library itself, but they are out in the community. They are working in all different areas of the community, with all different people from all over the community. And so, please, let's pass what we need to pass for an operating budget and do justice in Evanston. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tricia. Dan Joseph, Doreen Price, then Diane Thodas.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Dan Joseph of 1510 Greenwood. First, I want to do my personal thank you for Ricky Voss and Marty Lyons for what they did here. Any committee that had both of them, they could take the most boring subject in the world and make it the most interesting, more fun than watching most things on TV. We do have a street already called Lyons, same spelling. Maybe we could have a street by the name Voss. Now, for the real reason I'm here. Is anybody aware that, starting Monday of next week, CTA is going to reduce the hours of service on the 206 Evanston Circulator? Anybody here aware of it? I know Alderman's running this, as I told there. Does anybody else? CTA has total lack of communication. They didn't communicate when they changed the schedule on 93. They still, after coming on forty-eight years, I'm sorry, forty-six, have not been able to post bus stops in Evanston for the bus routes. We have a Pace Garage on Oakton, and the only route that goes by it is a suburban route, the 97 CTA Skokie. Why is service in Evanston Skokie, which is suburban, handled by CTA, and CTA does not even have a liaison? The last time we had somebody that attended was Harry Hirsch, who was a general manager, and the reason he attended, because he lived here in Evanston. Since then, there's nobody assigned to anything, whereas Pace has a liaison that comes to things and is available, and gets things done. Why are we continuing with CTA here? And I ask that the mayor or city manager look into changing the service here to Pace from CTA. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Doreen Price, Diane Thodas, and Chuck Wasserberg.
Hi, I'm Doreen Price from the Seventh Ward. I can make this shorter, because everyone spoke so eloquently on issues that I totally support, and that includes Mr. Reed. I understand when people elect people, or they have people, like Eleanor, their representative, speaking on their behalf, it's with the full knowledge that it's a two-way street. We've paid our taxes so that the people who matter to us can help us, and that we matter to them. I do hear the frustration, and I just want to say that I'm sort of the Peasnick type that wants to look at something that unifies everybody on realizing why these changes are being asked for individually, and sometimes in very fragmented ways. I've discussed with people to be very kind in terms of approaching people when you want solutions, because people are really frustrated. So, including myself. So what I'm saying is that I think we should go back to goals, and I mentioned it to Eleanor. She's great, because she had ten minutes, and we did the world together. In terms of the goals, which I don't know if people, if it's been published, I just saw the little flyers downstairs, but I don't see them anywhere else, and I don't see them on the website. But like I mentioned last time, the goals, I think, would unify everybody, and I think it would get some of the issues out front, so that when we have discussions, people will be heard, because both sides will be talking, not one side one meeting, and one side the other meeting, or something spoken before that should be spoken afterwards. So I'd like to see continuity in those kinds of discussions, and also that that's recognized in the discussions by the city manager to the citizens that he serves. In terms of these goals, they should be measurable, and they should include social aspects. And right now, like I said last time, the only social goal was at-risk families, and the rest of it, you know, economic development's one thing, but what is community development? And why shouldn't community development, or social-economic development is what they call, be part of it? Why shouldn't social impact investing be part of it, instead of talking about charity? Why don't we talk about investing in people? I think we need to change the nature of the conversation based on how we perceive our goals. Last but not least, the library is totally important. I totally, I support social services in anything that helps people with opportunities to live their lives and are very happy, which translates to healthy when you get into these alternative forms of medicine which are coming to the fore. We could use better integration with Northwestern in terms of finding other ways of helping people with regard to health, and realize that what we have as a plan for the city actually is for our health and well-being. So maybe well-being could be one of the goals, because if we have a livable city, that's not the same as having a city that produces well-being for everybody.
Doreen, we're at our three minutes. Okay. Thank you.
And then, okay, less lawyers and more social workers, because I see that there's lawsuits all the time, and if you treat people fairly and kindly, and they're heard, there's less likely, as you know, people will be, people are great. And if you give them a chance, even the people who seem to be your activists are really great, they're doing it from their hearts. And I don't want to hear the word charity when you talk about people who are in need. We should talk about them as investments, just like we talk about our businesses. So, thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. All right. We've got Diane Thodas, and then Chuck Wasserberg, and then Irv Chokol.
Hi, I'm Diane from the Seventh Ward, and as we know, Evanston has a national reputation for being a pretty progressive place. And that's one reason why I put on my walking shoes in the last election cycle and got to work, working for Devon Reed, among other progressives in Evanston. I'm glad he made it to City Council here, but I'm really bummed to hear about this thirty-five percent decrease in his office funding, and it will be the lowest-funded Clerk's Office in the state of Illinois. And I think that's really bad for our so-called progressive record. That does show us pretty bad. How come other offices are only getting a four percent cut, but his office is nine times greater than that? Now, this made me stand up and think a little bit. I did a lot of walking for Devon, and when I talked to voters, and knocked on their doors, and talked about his plans, there were two major plans, and they really picked up on his name and wanted to vote for him because of those two plans. And one of them was implementing a, what was it, the city Clerk's Office specifically, because they wanted a legislative tracker implemented, so they would have the electoral engagement needed to have a handle on how our aldermen are voting. They want this more direct, open, transparent process. This was the most important issue regarding their vote, and he got sixty-six percent. And we're in a special moment right now of electoral activism nationally, as well as locally, and demand for greater constituent engagement and participation, so the support for this legislative tracker was very key to getting Devon in office. The second thing that they were very interested in is also the implementation of plans to increase voter participation, a program to implement through an analytic study of the Evanston Populists who measure civic engagement. Those two were absolutely necessary, and not things normally associated with the Clerk's Office. The plan to defund the Clerk's Office by thirty-five percent is going to really inhibit his ability to put those two functions into action, and those were the reasons why he was voted into office. A vote for him to have a four percent decrease would show a more transparent and democratic and progressive consideration by the city council of the necessity for why he was put in office. But a vote for the thirty-five percent decrease cannot but be seen as a politically motivated action to not be able to have him fulfill those functions that he was elected for. We'll be watching closely tonight which aldermen will be voting for the thirty-five percent decrease, and which will keep it at four. And we're going to keep score on who really has an interest here in increasing our democratic access to our government and to our voter constituency. So we'll be watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we've got Chuck Wasserberg, Irv Chokol, and then Kim Hung.
Hi there, Chuck Wasserberg, 908 Greenwood. A lot of people have already spoken about this, so I'll be brief. I do want to register my deep concern about this disproportionate cut to Devon Reed's office. Mr. Reed was elected with a mandate. He was elected by a majority of the people here in Evanston, and he has, so he's got a job to do, and I think that cut would make it very difficult for him to do his job. So I just ask you to reconsider that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Chuck. Irv, and then Kim, and then Doug Sharp.
Hi, my name is Irv Chokol. I continue to be amazed about the job that Director Karen Damsig Lyons is doing at the Evanston Public Library. She's continually expanding and improving services. If you approve the requested budget, it will be money well-spent. The other topic I'm going to talk about are the agendas. I have two copies of the agenda. Both are incomplete, and neither one is up to date. The gold copy is sitting out there on the table for people to refer to. The white copy was emailed to me. Now, the Rules Committee talked about public comment, that's not in the agenda. The Administration Public Works Committee talked about topics tonight, that's not in the agenda. I suggest that there are deadlines be set for changes to the agenda before they're emailed to recipients.
Thank you, Irv. Things should be in the agenda that go up to everyone before we're talking about them up here.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there are separate committee agendas and the city council agenda, so there are items that were on the committee agendas which are not on the city council agenda this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, we've got Kim Hung, Doug, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing, Doug Sharp, and then Ann Townley.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Kim Hung. Mayor Hagerty, you did it right. I'm a first-time attendee of the city council meeting, and I'm very thrilled to be here, and I'm being of very good education. I believe in education. I live in the Third Ward with Melissa Nguyen. Unfortunately, I don't see her here, but I understand that was a long time absence that was planned. I just wanted to make a suggestion, a proposal, about the site that's vacant right now, Up For East, the old Whole Foods Market location, bordered on the south by Greenleaf, on the north by Hamilton, on the west by Chicago, and on the east by Hinman. I'm not against the Binney's proposal, but I am for something else. So what is that? It goes along with my interest in sustainable agriculture, since I have a background in biology. So I would suggest that it be a learning lab, or a greenhouse, or a farmer's market, or a combination of all three. I know this is not really topical at the moment, but I just wanted to throw that out there, just to use my time wisely tonight. Well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Kim, for that suggestion. Doug Sharp, then Ann Townley, and then Eduardo Gomez.
Okay, my name is Doug Sharp. I'm a member of Reclaim Evanston and a resident of the Ninth Ward. Devon Reed ran a campaign with the promise to focus the Clerk's Office on transparent government and fair and well-run elections. Cutting the Clerk's budget by thirty-five percent would be a drastic reduction in that vision, and wrong. Budgets say what our values are as a city. Evanston voters made clear what their values are by electing Clerk Reed. City council should make its values clear and amend the budget to bring the cuts to Clerk Reed's office in line with the cuts to every other department. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Doug. Ann Townley, and then Eduardo Gomez will be the last speaker.
Hello, I'm Ann Townley. I live in the Eighth Ward, and I am also a member of Reclaim Evanston, and I'm proud to have worked every weekend, January, February, and March of this year, to get Devon elected. And so many of us were excited to work for him, because we believed in the vision and values he articulated. Especially excited were a lot of young people, college and high school students, who hadn't been involved in local politics ever before. Clerk Reed showed that it was possible to take the progressive vision and values that we share and take it into the halls of power here at Evanston City Hall. So cutting the Clerk's budget is cutting back on that vision, and it's telling me and all of the other people involved and excited by his candidacy and his election that there isn't a place for that vision in the city hall or in this council. We urge you to vote to restore his budget, to affirm that vision. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ann. And then the last speaker is Eduardo Gomez.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Eduardo Gomez. I'm the deputy clerk here at the city of Evanston. Since starting my position here, it's been brought to my attention that there seems to be a lack of urgency to find meaningful solutions for the marginalized groups within the city, in particular, the Latino community. Previously, I was a tech trainer for the Evanston Public Library, and I was responsible of going out in the city and teaching people how to use their computers and handheld devices. During most of those interactions, people were grateful to the library because they offered these services in Spanish, because it allowed them to gain skills that would provide them with better opportunities for themselves and their families. But they couldn't quite say the same for the city. They felt that there was a lack of services and staff at the same time when it came to their needs. Most recently, in the welcoming city ordinance, it states that the city council wishes to further enhance the city's relationships with immigrant communities and make the city of Evanston an immigrant-friendly city. The ordinance sought to promote the general welfare of the city of Evanston residents and visitors alike. At face value, this could be argued that it was passed to ensure that people felt welcome here from prosecution, from law enforcement agencies. However, it stretches far beyond that for the Latino communities. One of the important factors of the ordinance is the general welfare, which could be summarized as the support, supporting the health, happiness, and fortune affecting a person or group. By this definition, it is the responsibility of the city to provide By this definition, it is the responsibility of the city to provide further support to the Latino community by granting them better access to information and resources. One of the things that the city clerk's office wants to do is translate documents into Spanish for the city council and standing committees. This will allow residents that speak Spanish to further engage with the city and be more involved. Thomas Jefferson once said that "an informed citizenry is at the heart of a dynamic democracy." And by this notion, we have a responsibility to the Latino community to provide them with better understanding on how their local governments work. Secondly, I would like to request that I be allowed to act as the liaison between the city departments and our Spanish-speaking residents. There's been numerous times, typically two to three times a day, where people come up to me asking me for translation services in other departments because they can't find someone that speaks the language. I do this out of the kindness of my heart because I wish someone would do that for my mother when she was in these situations. Patricia Effion, Department Coordinator, stated that "we need to do better for these people. We need to stop doing surveys and research. We need to act and implement policies." One of your colleagues, Alderman Simmons, said the same, that we have to be in action mode. So these services may seem insignificant to you guys, but for our community, they make all the difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Eduardo. All right, thank you, everybody, for coming out and sharing your thoughts and your perspectives with the city council on a variety of issues. We're now going to turn to, back to the agenda. We've got three special orders of business this evening, and we have SP1, and let's see, Alderman Rainey, could you just present SP1 to the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is your mic on?
Yes, yes, I'm just not speaking to it. Ordinance 131-017, the Evanston Library Fund 2017 Tax Levy. This is revised per the library board's action on December 7, 2017. Let me just fix this for one second, hold on. This is revised in the amount of $6,761,668 as extended. This represents an increase of 5.1 percent over the 2016 levy of $6,412,610 as extended. This is for action this evening.
Second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Fleming.
Yeah, so thank you to the speakers who came out. I just want to clarify something because I think was the first one last week who spoke and not in support. So, not to be long-winded, but there's a, the council has some responsibilities financially, but we also have some limited responsibilities with the way that the library is governed, which is Illinois law and so on and so forth. So it is not my desire to shut down the library. I have children who go to the library. I serve the homeless population. They spend a lot of time at the library. I can appreciate the library. The point I have tried to communicate is that we have a budget deficit, that, you know, we have a budget deficit. And in doing that, it is my responsibility to make what I believe are kind of conservative financial choices, because I, like all of the people in this room, don't want my taxes to go up. I don't want people to be displaced, and so in doing that, I have to factor everything. So as you all have talked about, we've had budgets, I mean, had departments make a 4 percent cut, and although the library is not a department, I was hopeful that they would also make a cut, not a cut that necessarily is going to impact the services, but a cut that is going to help all of the residents to remain in Evanston and not be financially burdened. And so that was my concern. I know I did speak of the capital project, which is not on the agenda tonight, I understand that, but for me, we're talking finances, and so I'd like to talk about all the finances. So I wanted to just give that kind of explanation for people who might be thinking, I just, you know, hate the library. That said, I do appreciate that the increase has gone down, I think it was like 8 percent last time to now 5 percent. So I do appreciate that. I think, again, personally looking at the documentation in front of me, I grew up with the Bookmobile, think they're great, so on and so forth, but I would have appreciated, I guess, some cuts in different ways. So, right, I see that there is a projection of consultant fees that are up over $200,000. You know, consultants are fine people. However, in this budget deficit, I would have liked to see cuts to things like that. I'm not going to get into what the consultants do or don't do. I know there's an equity audit that's starting, and I hope that's beneficial, and, you know, some services are changed to accommodate what the consultant fines, but I would have liked to see some more cuts that, again, don't impact the residents, but are kind of just a little bit more internally. So those are my thoughts on the library.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Safford.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Alderman Fleming said and just ask if Director Lyons or someone from the board can explain the necessity of this increase for the library's mission. And also, I want to say that I do appreciate that this is less than it was last time.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, Clerk Reed, members of the city council, City Manager Bob Kowitz, Karen Danzig-Lions, your library director. After the last time we were together at the city council, you're asking the library to reconsider what we were asking in our budget and also with questions about the capital plans. We had a special meeting on December 7, and I made recommendations to the board that were difficult to make, but which removed two expansions of service that we had included originally in the operating budget. For three years, I've been trying to find a funder or a grant to allow us to bring into service a mobile library van. So it's not a Bookmobile, it's not a Buzz, it's a mobile library van. And I'm hoping that some generous benefactor may still come forward to help us with the $155,000 cost of that van to make it a reality. The other reduction, the other elimination in this proposal before you tonight was the elimination of the second library lending machine, which would be installed in St. Francis Hospital to bring some additional access to books and materials to the residents conveniently in that ward. Most of the increase that is included in what is before you is a result of the AFME negotiations. We have, 2/3rds of our staff are part-time, so we save every year by not paying full benefits and full pensions. And our staff works hard. They all work hard. They deserve the raise that was negotiated on behalf of them. In addition, we've indexed the payment to the city because our city colleagues assist the library, and that had been at $250,000. Now it's indexed to the AFME contract, so every year we will know what that increase is going to be, because they had raises as well. As Alderman Fleming mentioned, there is an increase in the consulting, and I recommend that that remain in for the Equity Diversity and Inclusion consultant who is beginning with us tomorrow. It was difficult to decide to not expand some services that I think strategically it will be a great addition to the tools that we have, but we need to maintain this library service that we have. We need to be smarter and strategic about what we're doing, and we will report back to you on the results of our work with the EDI audit to show you what we're doing, how we're doing it, and how we hope to move the needle. I also have with me this evening the architects, who are happy to come up and share some highlights with you, some brief highlights about the main library renovation.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Karen. I have a question for Marty. Referring back to what Alderman Fleming mentioned, if we had reduced the library operating fund, operating budget by 4 percent, what would that come to?
The library operating budget is about 7.1, or is it 7.4? About 7.4, so 4 percent of that would be just under $300,000.
Okay, that's fine. I do want to come back and hear what the architects have to say about phasing in the work under the capital budget. So if they're available, that would be good.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Thank you. So the library, I think everyone here agrees, is very important to our community, and you're serving returning citizens, the homeless community, the financially insecure, startup businesses. From a personal experience, the library was there to support me many years ago, early in business, and I had to choose between paying my liability insurance or buying a new copier. And so I went to the library, and I used the copy machine there. When my children were preparing for ACT prep, the library was there, getting the ACT books that I needed that were unaffordable otherwise, so that they could prepare for testing. The library has been a great partner to me as I have transitioned into this role as alderman. Every time that I've reached out to the library for any sort of support, the library and Karen has been absolutely responsive. When the mobile Bookmobile was going to the library, and I said, "Hey, we don't have any services in the 5th Ward. Can you make that happen?" Somehow, she made it happen. When it was its first launch, and it was on a national tour, and it was thought to be impossible, you made it happen. When we were out of books for the free little libraries, ended up with 100 books on my doorstep so that I could fill them. You're serving over the rainbow where they are not having fair access to a lot of amenities here in town. It's very important. In addition to that, I think that the thoughtfulness of the book van or the library van was really an important answer to what has been the most criticism that, you know, the library isn't equitable, we don't have access. And so I am very disappointed to see that that is what is being cut, because it was something absolutely to look forward to, having access in parts of town that have been asking for it. So I'm thankful that you included that, and you heard the residents of the city, but I'm disappointed to see that that is being eliminated. So I actually was prepared to vote in support of the library as it was originally proposed because I believed that it was thoughtful and it was the right thing to do at this time. So I don't know if we can somehow discuss putting back in the mobile van at this point. If not, if I can, and I appreciate the commitment of working towards finding a donor or some sort of opportunity to still move forward with the mobile library option, but is that something that can be discussed at this point?
Just as I understand it, tonight, it's the library board that controls their budget. It's this council that has to either vote up or down on the levy. That is my understanding, City Manager, if I'm incorrect. Okay, that is correct.
So I just hope that you continue, and I'm certain that you will, in that commitment that we can find an option for that mobile library. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rue Simmons. Alderman Rainey.
Well, when I saw that you had reduced the budget, I was thrilled. And then I saw what you did, I thought, this is, and you stated this was your recommendation, that you use the mobile van and the vending machine as the reductions, and then you're telling us tonight you did that because they were additions, and then you're telling us that you kept in the additions of the consultants. We have, we've hired an equity, an empowerment person. Can't we loan her to the library for some services? That's what I would do. You need to cut the consultant. That's what you need to do. And I am not going to, I am, I was just so disheartened when I saw that you did this, and knowing some of the people on your library board, that they allowed for you to do this, when that was truly an effort to reach out to the community, because no one is more against library branches than I. I think the idea of the library at the Crown Center is fine. You have these marvelous donors who are giving so much money to make that happen. God forbid anybody should prevent that. But that you have library board members that allowed for this cut when it was really an effort to reach out, I just am so surprised that this happened. And I can't do anything about changing that, but I can voice my objection by voting against this budget. And I'm so sad that I'm going to do that. Because it just shows such a lack of, you know, on the one hand, you're going to have an equity consultant, and on the other hand, you're going to thumb your nose at going into the neighborhoods with the mobile van that everybody was very excited about.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. So Alderman Fisk had mentioned earlier wanting to hear from the architects. Let me just ask a question of the whole council. I think we have a lot of conversation that we need to have as we go into the new year in 2018 about our capital plans, particularly those that are outside of the normal capital that we're doing with the water system and the utilities. We have, you know, a new Crown Center, Community Center that the council would like to deliver, and the library has plans for what they would like to do with renovations. My suggestion would be that we take, have a specific conversation about the library's plans for their capital, where we have an adequate amount of time and not all the other items that we have on our agenda tonight, to have that kind of conversation as a council.
I think that's a good idea.
Alderman Fisk.
I think that's a good idea. But what do we need to pass tonight? I mean, could we pass a temporary budget for the, operating budget for the library so that they're not, they don't have to close? I mean, a minimal amount of?
Well, I think what we can do is we can basically vote, this SP1 is for action. It has been moved and seconded. I think we can take a vote on that, and then what we're sort of indicating to the library is we want to have a conversation as a council about the capital budget, not just for the library, but other big projects that we're going to have here in Evanston and where the priorities are. And do that in 2018. This budget, as I understand it, and you correct me, City Manager, is not a, there is not the capital of, you know, $10,95,000 in this budget.
For SP1, that is just the tax levy, which is the operating revenue for the library.
Okay, I guess I'm concerned that there is money in the operating budget that goes toward the capital, the capital plan.
My understanding from a conversation before with Mr. Lyons, and if we need him, he can get up, is that that is not the case, that there is not, you know, debt service and principal in this operating budget.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Or planning? Consultant fees or planning for the capital?
The additional request that we had brought before you for consideration for the main library renovation is not in the operating budget. This is the operating budget.
No, I understand the difference, and, you know, folks keep telling me I don't understand it. I absolutely understand that. But my concern is that, and I need to be reassured, that there's not money in the operating budget that is going in any way toward the capital plan until we've had a chance to discuss the capital plan.
There's no additional capital money in this budget.
Okay, no planning, no architects' fees, no, no nothing.
There is no additional capital in this.
Okay, okay.
All right, so seeing no lights, we had a motion to move SP1 with the second. City clerk, could you please take the roll on SP1?
Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Safford? Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
All right, SP1 ordinance 131-0-17, Evanston Library Fund, 2017 tax levy passes the City Council with a six to two vote. Okay, Alderman Rainey, can you?
Mr. Mayor, yes. Next, the council is being asked to approve the fiscal year 2018 budget of the City of Evanston in the expense amount of $335,456,800. Move approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Alderman Wilson?
Obviously, we need to discuss the clerk request, so.
Sure. Okay, so Clerk Reed, do you want to, I understand you have a slide or two you wanted to take people through? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
And you can click the play button somewhere. The present button up at the top corner next to the, yep.
Yeah, I don't know if the clicker's going to work.
I didn't know, I didn't do that. That's you. All right, so I just want to start off with presenting the difference in the budget that was presented and where I am. You know, I thought that early on in the process, I would be brought in to some of the budget discussions. And we did have discussions with the budget team, but most of the recommendations, all of the recommendations that I made were not included in what was presented. So the difference here is the regular pay between the manager's presented budget and mine is, mine is at $181,000 for regular pay, and it's fairly straightforward. There are $26,000 that would allow us to purchase the software for the legislation tracker. Tracker, that number also includes our codification services. Office supplies remains the same. Election supplies increases, this will allow us to, one, purchase software that will give us a voter list, as well as, as well as allow us some staff to do outreach during elections. And training and travel also is increased by $1,000 when compared with the manager's budget. That includes training for both the deputy clerk and I in going through the municipal clerks league. So a bit about what the office does and where we hope to create a difference is, we currently produce the minutes for all regular council meetings. You are aware that one thing that has changed is that we now link to the video, which makes the record more accessible and allows folks to watch directly what happened during council meeting. We also hope to link directly to documents, and that's somewhat time-consuming work without software. We are hoping to improve accessibility of city records. Deputy Clerk Gomez mentioned this, part of that is translating the regular minutes to Spanish in an accessible format, as well as certain other committees. We're looking to digitize records. When I first took office, we had a number of records that were located in the office that we moved up to the attic, and we're hoping to digitize all of those records over the course of the next year and make them available through the Socrate system online. Historical archive, the office is chock full of great historical records, photos and other archives that we want to make sure are out and available to the, to the public. We have had, a few months ago, a very brief discussion with, we had a meeting with Director Lyons as well as Shorefront to begin that discussion. And then as well as creating a legislation tracking portal, which would allow residents to more fully track legislation as it moves through the committees, any edits that have been made, you know, who presented those changes in legislations, as well as the vote count in this portal, be accessible online. As far as our role in elections and civic engagement, Alderman Fisk has a question?
Sure, let's go to our question.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, City Clerk. Could you tell me a little bit more about, just tell me what you meant about going to the library and to Shorefront about the historical archive? Are you looking to deaccession some material that the city has or place it with other organizations?
We, so one of the most interesting things that I'm hoping to share with the library is Shorefront is, we have phone books from the 1800s and early 1900s in the office that I think are, could be of interest to the community and could be of interest of historians. And so those kinds of records, I want to make sure are.
Well, are you looking at placing them with these organizations or?
Potentially, with the library more.
Well, the library already has the phone books, but I guess I feel a little bit uncomfortable about making that decision. I don't know what's in the clerk's office or what historical records are there, but I think it would be helpful to know before you make, you know, that real decision.
I am perfectly capable of consulting with the legal department to make sure that nothing is.
That's not what I'm saying. I mean, I, I feel uncomfortable about, you're making a decision about where material should go without knowing what that material is, I guess. That's just my.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
Elections and civic engagement, we plan to do mobile voter registration prior to my taking office. We did do voter registration, but only in office. We hope to, we've been building partnerships and connections with groups like Kurt's Cafe and other local nonprofits to make sure that their residents are registered to vote, that the population that they serve is registered to vote. We've built a partnership with VPAC and the Legal Vote Voters and a number of other local organizations to help achieve that mission. We hope to increase off-year election turnout to 60% or higher. That is in line with the Star Cities rating and the Star Cities outline, and so we hope to achieve that mission. What we will do is we'll specifically, we'll use our software that we purchased to directly reach out to folks who aren't traditionally voting in elections. As many of you know, on campaigns, campaigns typically reach out only to the folks who consistently vote in elections, and we want to reach out specifically to the folks who are not regularly participating in off-year elections. And, you know, studies show that the best way to get someone out to vote is having a one-on-one conversation. And part of the need is to have the capacity to organize not only staff internally in my office, but volunteers to achieve that in a nonpartisan way, as well as creating a voter guide. We're working with ETHS with Nicole Parker, the civics chair, to create a civics curriculum. Before taking office, I did, you know, I worked at, I did some work with Chicago Votes at John Hancock High School, teaching civics with a civics teacher, and I hope to bring that here to Evanston to get our young folks involved in civics and voting. We've also, we're working with the county clerk's office to see if we can bring a pop-up early voting site to ETHS, and Dr. Witherspoon has been on board with that. We're also looking into bringing participatory budgeting to ETHS and helping the school run that process, which will again create a great civics education, creating the next generation of voters. And then we're responsible for managing our local elections. Foy and transparency, with FOI, we process all requests. We will continue as the Open Meetings Act designee and hoping to keep compliance with all committees. We assist residents with filing and narrowing accessing FOIs. The office is responsible for adactions, and we plan to take that responsibility on more, which will create a larger responsibility for the office and will continue participation in the open data governance team. Other services that the office handles are handicap placards. As Eduardo mentioned, several times a day since he started, he is called away to help translate either in the collector's office, because on the first floor, we do not have someone bilingual available, as well as a number of times he's had to come up here to hearings. And I believe one day he had to translate for quite a long time, a hearing for a gentleman. We'll continue to serve, you know, on the Board of Local Improvements. We are working, we're hoping that passports can be moved to the office, back to the office, which would, the office is open until 7 o'clock, which would allow residents to more fully access passport services. You know, currently, the passport services close at 4:30, and many parents have come during the lunch break of the passport. Personally have now, and are somewhat livid that they had to pull their kids out of school during lunch and folks aren't available, or just the fact that they have to pull their kids out of school. So we're hoping to keep the office open until 7 to allow for better access. And I see.
Yeah, Clerk Reed, Alderman Rainey has a comment or a question?
These are, a lot of these things have been going on in the clerk's office forever. How many, how many handicap placards a day or a week do you do?
I don't know the exact number. It's not a ton every week.
What about, what about voter registration? How many a day do you do of those?
The goal is to do more mobile voter registration and do more outreach.
What about, like absentee ballots and things like that?
We haven't had an election since I've taken office. You couldn't request an absentee ballot now if you wanted to. But that is, that is something that we want to do to increase voter participation. We want to get more people using mail-in ballots, mail-in ballots.
Passports a day, do you know that the collector's office does?
Yes, the collector's office does about five passports a day.
A day?
Yeah. Which is a total of, the revenue for passports this year was 30,000, it will end up around $30,000. So that's about 12,000 passports that are processed a year.
I just want to make a comment on translation services out of the clerk's office.
Sure.
I know that we have had some real serious criticism by some professional translators regarding translation services at the city. And I think we should be very careful. Maybe, for example, going over to the collector's office, doing some translation verbal is okay, but I think going much beyond that, we really should not be getting involved and that the city manager should get on top of that issue if we need it citywide, building-wide, and that we should not be filling in where we shouldn't be filling in.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Wilson?
I see the notary has a star. Is there a notary in the office now?
There, at the moment, there is not.
Are you a notary or not? You're not?
No, my application is still in the process. For some reason, it was bounced back.
Okay, well, I'm a notary, it was like a form, it was back in a couple of weeks, so it's been a really long time. So it's pending?
Right.
Okay.
And Alderman Wilson, members of the council, my assistant, Suzie Hall, is a notary, so we get a lot of the notary traffic now in the City Manager's office, which we, here too far, have not received. And I think Mr. Ford, there's others in the Law Department as well. So it, right, so we've, so that, sorry, and there's one. So, you know, there's a history of, we are notary for all.
Okay, that, well, that's fine.
And so now with the clerk not offering that service, we've had it impact other parts of the organization.
Okay, well, and I guess a little bit to that point, I've, obviously, I've heard from a lot of people in the community, but a couple of things that I don't know are clear with regard to the passports. It's my understanding from my conversations with you, you didn't feel that the passports were appropriate services for the clerk's office so that they were moved out with your, you know, either encouragement or acquiescence, is that correct?
So the, I guess I'll have to explain a bit further, but, you know, before taking office, there's an understanding that within a month of my taking office, I'd be able to swap out one deputy clerk and hire a deputy clerk. The application and interview process didn't, the application didn't go out until, I believe, late August, and interviewing didn't start until September. The deal was that we moved passports and real estate transfer stamps over to the collector's office, I'd be able to immediately hire a new staff member. And my question was, you know, are there services that I believe more align with the mission of, my mission and the office that we could bring over? And that was either vital statistics or property tax appeals. And, you know, vital statistics to get into it specifically, you know, we have the mayor's summer youth program. The state, the state of Illinois allows a program where you can print, where you can print birth certificates and death certificates mobily. My mission was to work with the city, with the mayor's summer youth program. Because I know as someone who, not too long ago, was working low-income jobs and a homeless youth, that not having access to a birth certificate or a social security card can be the difference between getting a job and not getting a job. And so my mission was to go there, make it accessible there while they're applying for jobs, and also find funds either within my office or outside of the office to help the young folks get free birth certificates. As far as property tax appeals, again, we all know the issues that are going on with marginalized communities here, with the Tribune report that came out regarding property tax appeals.
Okay, well, I guess.
So I guess the answer is, yes, I did agree to have passports moved out. I believe with, without those other services being ported over to the clerk's office. And since real estate transfer stamps is also gone, and now mail is gone, I'm willing to take passports back, especially because we're open until 7, and I think it's a great service to the community to have that be accessible until 7 o'clock.
And I've used the passport services, so I think it's a great service too. But the issue, part of the issue is that we now have other people in the city doing a lot of this work, so we're paying other people in other departments. I, which, it's just the fact of the matter. So your pay's not being cut. Actually, that's something I've heard from a handful of people, that they thought, "We're cutting your pay and we're not cutting your pay." So I just want to make sure that's clear. And I know you know that already.
Yeah.
But for some people who might be watching, so we're not cutting your pay. That is set, yeah, so what?
May I make a note to the point you just made regarding, so there is no net increase of positions in the collector's office. While those services did move over, there was a vacancy in the collector's office, that vacancy was eliminated. So there actually isn't an increase in staff in the collector's office.
Okay, but I've been asking you for like months, because you have one less person. That's what accounts for the cut. The big, the big part of the cut is you have one less person. And, you know, the answers I got from you initially were, you're really busy because you're meeting with all the Aldermen in Chicago, and that was like taking up so much of your time. And, you know, I'm just, I'm having some frustrations because, you know, you're talking about the minutes, but when I look at the, the city website doesn't have minutes posted since the middle of October. And we have other staff people who are doing the council actions, so somebody else in the staff has to do the council actions and post those. So, you know, the point is, you know, people want to know how we voted. You can go online and find that, but you're not finding that from the minutes, you're finding that from stuff that other people are having to do. So, you know, I'm looking to you, and I asked you last week, I've asked you before, you know, I need backup. You're talking about buying software. What software? How much does it cost? You talk about the transparency and, you know, the packet went out last week, and then the budget's been going on for months and months and months, and you come in with a slide presentation without any numbers or any backup. It's, it's really challenging because, you know, I think we want to be supportive, but you're not giving us anything to work with. And, you know, we don't have any, you know, other than just general ideas of things you want to do, and a lot of them are outside the job description. You need to keep the records. And then some things come out that make us nervous, you know. Now I'm wondering, you go to the office and there's, it's kind of empty, and it gives me pause, like, did stuff get given away or thrown away? Where's all the stuff? So I'm sure it's fine, but, you know, I guess they got moved to the attic or whatever. But, you know, the budget process has been, you know, we ask these questions, and the staff prepares these detailed memos. We have 180-plus pages of extra, you know, minutia. So you got to give us something to work with, and, you know, we don't have it. You know, if you, you know, during the course of the year, if you find some great product that would be useful, you know, we're interested in hearing that. Alderman Simmons and I, and Alderman Rainey were, got the benefit of hearing some presentations at the National League of Cities. There are some great products out there, and we already are using some great products. The Socrate system's in place, you know, we have a lot of transparency, we've done a lot of things, but you need to come to us with more than just a general concept. You need to come to us and deliver like the product. What do you want to buy? What's it cost? You know, give it to us. And we don't have that at this point. So I don't feel comfortable putting The Socratic system's in place. We have a lot of transparency. We've done a lot of things, but you need to come to us with more than just a general concept. You need to come to us and deliver the product. What do you want to buy? What's it cost? Give it to us. And we don't have that at this point. So I don't feel comfortable putting, hiring another employee to do something that you haven't clearly identified.
If I can respond to statements Alderman Wilson made. So, Juan, you took the meetings with Chicago Aldermen out of context. That's when we were working on PB, and there are several Chicago Aldermen who have implemented PB, so of course, we met with folks who are already doing it. It's actually been easier to meet with Chicago Aldermen than it has to meet with some of my fellow council members here. I've tried to meet with you, Don, several times, and my office reached out, and we weren't able to get a meeting. I offered to come downtown to meet with you. So it's easier to meet with them than to meet with you.
You're definitely mischaracterizing that. You wanted to meet with me about one specific thing. We've talked many times since that.
If I may continue. As far as the budget process, like I said, I was under the impression that from the beginning, that I would be involved in the budget process, and that recommendations that I made during the budget process would be included in the budget that was presented to you. The goals that are listed in the budget are not goals that my office had any part of creating. The budget that is in the document is not a budget that my office created. So yes, I wish that I would have been involved in the process. The process has been dysfunctional, so I'm all with you. Had the process worked the way it should have from the beginning, you would have had the backup, you would have had the extra numbers. So we can move on to...
Are you done with your presentation here, Clerk Reed?
Here.
Okay. So what I'd like to do, because I want everybody to be able to understand how we got to where the council is now with the budget. City Manager, did you do a crosswalk that takes us from last year's budget to where we are this year? And we can just focus on, this council can focus on the numbers. I've heard from Clerk Reed about what he'd like to do.
If I can make one last point. It's in the slide, but I don't necessarily intend to show it. This year, I took a look at the budget, and we have a surplus of about $30,000 from what the budget is reflecting. If you factor that in with passport services, which is, from my understanding, to be cut next year, that's a total of $60,000. If you move the $30,000 that's left over from this year, the $30,000 in passport money. The difference that we're talking about is only about $25,000.
Okay. Thank you. This looks a little tiny here. I'll be able to make this a little bigger for people to see.
Go a little bit, go 200.
Yeah, go a little bigger.
All right.
Can you go larger?
Bigger. Okay, thank you. We'll get a printout.
I'll just...
Keep going.
Just go through this.
Would you like me to walk through it?
Yes, please.
What we have on the screen, and Kate, what I'd like you to do is go down first. So slowly, you have the 2,000 adopted budget that we've referred to quite often, and it is the $275,000 that had three full-time personnel included. Then what we did, going back up again, is, just so everyone can see it, is... And we've worked, the Clerk even had something similar. I think in yours, it was around $85,000. That was the cost. So we had the detail is the transfer of the one position out was $84,492, and health insurance and things like that change. Even these numbers could be inaccurate if we hired somebody who had full-time, who had family medical. The numbers would be different versus somebody who asked for an opt-out, which is much less. So in any event, we budgeted at this level, that $84,492 encapsulates the transfer. And you can see, right to the right, it says, "Transfer of the position to finance." What we're not showing is the transfer of the other position down to Vital Records, because that position is replaced with the current deputy clerk. So it's not listed... There is some savings, because the current deputy clerk, I believe, is making less than the two clerks that were transferred out. So that's a, I believe, it was about a $6,000, $7,000 differential.
All right. So the person that was in the Clerk's Office that went to Vital Records, went to Vital Records and performed a function that was not a function that was previously performed in the Clerk's Office?
Correct. That's in the Health Department.
This person that was transferred for $85,000 or so, they were performing a function that was in the Clerk's Office?
Correct. They moved over to do passport and real estate transfer tax.
Okay. Passport and real estate transfer, which was done in the Clerk's Office, moved over and is now done in the Revenue Department, Finance Department?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you go down to the bottom, Kate, please, because for that column, I just want to make sure we have that. So the 191, 996 is the number of, for a baseline budget with two people. No 4%, no reductions of any kind. Then if we go back up, just so we keep our columns clear, and then the 4% change, that was recommended by the budget team.
Marty, before you go to the 4% change, can you just walk through the baseline budget? The difference between the 2018 baseline and the object. So printing is the same, postage charge backs is the same, overnight mail is the same, travel and training is the same, postage is the same, membership dues is the same, copy machine charges is the same, codification services changed based on an email from the Clerk. Office supplies is the same. Election supplies was increased at the request of the Clerk.
Mr. City, that was the transfer down of that $1,000. So that was him making a request, not to increase the budget, but to redirect some resources.
And then there's an additional $1,000 for a car use. Could you explain that?
So the car use is, the Clerk's Office has requested the utilization of fleet vehicles. And we do have pool cars that are on occasion used by a variety of personnel. Many of these personnel already have other vehicles, but it's... I'll pick on engineering or any other department that might need the pool car on occasion. In this regard, we have a division, a business unit, with no other car, and the Clerk wanted to have use of that vehicle. And so we costed out, based on the usage to date in 2017, an amount of $500, which is the rental of auto fleet is the maintenance, and the rental of auto fleet replacement is to buy a new vehicle within an eight-year timeframe, if that's the vehicle life. So at $1,000 a year for that rental, that's, if you think of that in all the times for renting a car, that would be about $85, a little under $82, $83.33 a month.
And that equates to how many trips or how much use?
It was, how many, Ms. Dorley? Was it 33 year-to-date? So for half a year, it was 33 uses. So we doubled it, 66 uses, and just came up with this number. It's also approximately equal to 1/4 of that vehicle. If you see us with just a Ford Focus or the smallest vehicle we have, it's about $2,000 a year for each of those line items. So we're charging for a quarter of a car.
Alderman Fisk, did you have a question with the spreadsheet?
Yeah, I just want to know about, is the cost of the driver in here as relates to the cars?
No, we don't have any costs for drivers.
The Clerk is driving himself, then?
No, the Clerk is not driving himself, to my knowledge.
Is there another staff person driving the clerk?
We do have a deputy clerk. We do have temporary... That's up to the clerk, and we make sure that... Our goal is to make sure that the person has valid license, and we know who is checking out. As Ms. Dorley can attest, the Fleet Division keeps track of who checks out a vehicle.
I'm somewhat insulted by this line of questioning. I know if...
I just want to know. I want to know if that is...
Am I driving the car? No.
I want to know if the driver of the car is reflected in the budget, and what do we do for departments where a staff member needs a driver? Is that reflected in the budget? Or do we offer that in Fleet Services, offer drivers?
No.
Okay. Because I wasn't aware of that.
Okay. Is there anything else on this spreadsheet? And then I got some lights here.
Maybe just do the 4%. There's one additional column that represents on the 4% reduction.
Yes. So if you'd go up, Kate, so the 4% reduction per memo that we did provide to the Clerk, the 4% decrease, and I know we've lost our, to the left, so the Clerk, the $3,000 is representative of the fact that our original budget had all of the raises that all staff were getting as a part of the negotiations, roughly 5%, and the Clerk's compensation is set by statute. So we pulled that back out. So there's no increase for the Clerk or for council, and that's, that whole $3,397 is just the amount for that change. Then if we go down to the $3,000, Kate, can you help me out by going to the left? What's right, that center, I need to know what that is. Training and travel, and Ms. Dorley, is that based on actuals in the previous year? I think we cut back from $5,000 to $3,000. So that's $2,000. That would be enough training. We would have directors that would go to a national conference for a little over that amount, but that would provide for the state conference, for other training. That's the cut there. The postage, that's the reduction of the postage. Copy machine charges, they're self-explanatory. So, and again, if you go to the right, so you can see what the "based on" says, "Based on actual spending." So there hadn't been any actual spending. So we quite often will look at previous history for a given account, and if we're not spending out of it, especially in this budget, where we are looking for decreases, we look at that change. Should somebody, should a division need to spend money out of that? It's their entire budget that is watched, not an individual account.
And so just so we can conclude, there's one last column dealing with the furlough.
And so another change at the top, you'll see a $905 change. And again, the Clerk, we had to do an adjustment, because we had the originally Clerk in there as a furlough and as the 99.5, but we cannot adjust the Clerk's salary for either furloughs.
If I may note that this year, when a furlough was assigned to all city staff, I voluntarily took that furlough as well, and I believe I'm the only person on the dais to have done that.
And if I can, that should have said, I believe we changed this, it's supposed to say three furlough days for the deputy. So that's 99.
So the 2018 recommended budget number, then?
Going all the way across is...
183, 784. And that's the reduction from the 191, 996.
Correct. And again, all, the majority of that is for the transfer of the staff.
And then what's the percentage reduction between 191 and 183?
I'm sorry, Mr. City Manager. I did the reduction on the gross from 274. We'll run that really quick. I did 274 down to what it would have looked like without the staff reduction. It's about 3%, but we got somebody running it 4%.
So that equates to the average... Do you know what other departments' total reductions were?
If you go to page 21, I believe, can someone else check the packet? You'll actually see in the one document, we have all the percentages by department of changes. For instance, when all of the residents have come up and talked about the 35%, it was 33% in the document given to the council. What's our page number? Page 22 of the packet would show the other reductions by department, with all other departments, with the exception of the Health Department that had the victim advocates going there, so they had an increase, but...
And so just for the record, then, the City Manager's Office, 14.3% reduction, the Law Department, 5.5, Ministry of Services, 10.1, Community Development, 6.6, Police, an increase of 0.67%, Fire, a decrease of 1%, Health, as you mentioned, is an increase, Parks and Rec, 3% decrease, and Public Works, 8.79%.
And on the Public Works side, I do want to... Theirs was a $1.5 million. They have a large budget, and they still had one of the larger percentage decreases.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Lyons. So to summarize, again, last year's budget, 275,000. Adjustment was made when someone was transferred out of the Clerk's Office into the city office... Well, Clerk is a city, too, but into the Finance Division, so that cost is still being incurred by the city and the Finance Division. That adjustment came to 191,000. Then there was the 4% reduction applied to it, so that leads us to the 183. That's before the council now. Many lights on, so we'll go with Alderman Rainey, then we'll go to Fleming, and then Saffron.
So the disagreement by the Clerk is the 183,784. That's the problem. Okay. So one of the, the only reason I have my light on is because I recollect you were making a comment about software to secure the voter registration list. Citywide voter registration. I'm not sure what software you're talking about, but right on this computer, I have the entire city of Evanston voter registration list. It cost me $6 from... And I'm supposed to go downtown and get a new one, and it's a disk. You put it in, and it has everybody's birthday, the last time you voted, when you registered to vote, where you live, and some crazy people who put down their phone numbers. And I mean, it's just the most amazing list. So what's with the software?
So it's not just the voter list itself, because I have access to that from the County Clerk's Office. It's a software that allows us to very effectively track who we've spoken to and organize it, so we know who we've spoken to, what they've said, and so we can reach back out to them. And it's not a very expensive software. That's not as...
How much?
I think the total cost for the year would be about $2,000.
Add a column, put an X. You know, I mean, like, that's too much. We don't need that. I am very concerned, based on the way you talk, and it's very exciting if you were reclaimed Chicago. And that's what I'm scared about. It's sounding way too political. I love politics. I love the fact that you want to be political, but you're the city clerk. You can't be, you just can't be political, being the city clerk. And I know that's in your blood, and the city clerk can't be political. And you have conducted the hugest political campaign over this budget. I mean, these people didn't do this on their own. They were motivated by, I mean, you know, it was a lobbying campaign, and it was an amazing campaign. And so you've got to step back from that as a city clerk. You just can't. You can't be political. That's all I'm saying. You're a nonpartisan candidate, and you got yourself elected, but now you've got to stop.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming.
Marty, or sorry, Mr. Lyons, can you answer a couple of questions for me on this worksheet? My first question is, and maybe it's going to be too late by the time we do this, but can we put this worksheet online? Like, can it go under Budget Memos or something?
Certainly.
And that's what you can, it would have been nice, you know, to have it beforehand. I know, but for the people out there who can't see that micro writing. So the car expense, is that something, do we usually charge departments for their car use?
Yes, we charge all departments for their car use, based on the fleet size in the department. This is the first time we've been in this situation, where we had a new use, where there was just going to be the shared use, no actual home vehicle. Again, I think I stated this, prior to this, the smallest that we ever had for that $500 would have been some department that may have had a split vehicle, a car split in half between two divisions, but usually it would be one car, about $2,000 to $3,000 per line item to maintain it and replace it. We thought this was a solution that was something worth trying, because it showed utilization, keeps us from going out and renting with a rental car agency. We do that in our Engineering Division. Thought it was a solution that would allow the Clerk access, but also show cost. And then we'd track it for a year, and if that's not how we wanted to move forward, we could go from... we could go from there. But it would get just charged at $500 regardless of the use, just so you're aware. What we do is, if this budget was passed, divide those numbers by 12, transfer the money, one twelfth every month.
Okay. My other question is for training and travel. So the clerk mentioned a city clerk training program. Does this $2,000 cover that? Do you know?
I do not know if it would cover it. I would defer to the clerk.
Do we have actuals from the last couple of years? Can we look quick while we're talking?
All right. And then my other question, so I understand the copy charges and the postage and all that is year-to-date, and those are small enough that, you know, I guess they don't make that much of a difference. I -- when I do see year-to-date based on actual spending, I appreciate that we're adjusting that, but I also realize that the office has only been open for six months, so I don't know, in that case, how we -- you know, I just want to make sure to point that out. So we're talking about year-to-date spending and adjusting the budget, but the office has not been open for a full year, so just want to make sure those adjustments are accurate. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Suffernin.
So Clerk Reed, between the statute and the city code, there are like 15 duties. Are you saying that you and one deputy clerk isn't sufficient to perform those duties? Those, just those 15, not any of the other stuff that you want to do?
Not to -- one of the duties that the clerk's office has within those 15 duties, defined by state statute and our local code, is the election official.
Stay with me, stay with me.
I'm with you. I'm right with you.
The 15 things.
So the answer to that is...
Eduardo can do, that's a sufficient staffing level. Yeah, we can't even do it. Sorry, I was having a conversation. The 15 things, right? Between the city code, and then there's a couple of things in the compiled statutes. Can you and one deputy clerk do those? I mean, you think it's a sufficient staffing level to accomplish those things? Minutes, records, that stuff?
To do them, to excel at them, to do them well to the level that I believe the people of Evanston expect? No.
Okay, so you're saying that you need an additional deputy just to accomplish...
Additional funding for the offices. It's...
I guess what I'm saying is, what would the additional funding be without a person? I'm saying, can the two of you handle the minutes, the records, all that stuff? You and one deputy, can you do that or no?
Part of the additional funding is for software as well to make that more streamlined.
Okay. Now, when the city purchases software, do we go through a central purchasing? You're in a -- it's a weird spot, right? You're an independently elected official, as you point out, but you're also a full-time person. You're the only full-time person up here. There's, like I said, 15 duties that are in statute and city code that need to happen. And then the rest of the stuff, you know, obviously, if you want to talk about the election, that's -- next year's an election here, so, and I don't remember from your slideshow how much you're saying you need for the election.
In the slide, it's $10,500.
Okay. And do you have an accounting of what you would spend that on?
Yeah, part of that is for that software, for the voter file, to have an organized voter file. Part of that is for a part-time staff.
Right, now, if your intention is to...
As well as creating a voter guide.
Are you going to match up, you want to register voters that aren't registered, so the voter file wouldn't be what you need to use?
So, no. The mission isn't to register voters. That's a part of the mission, and we're more so relying on organizations that exist, such as the League of Women Voters and VPAC and that group, to register voters. Our mission is to specifically do outreach, conduct outreach to people who are not, who maybe vote in presidential elections but don't come and vote in off-year elections, and to organize a campaign to get those folks out to vote in a nonpartisan manner.
Okay. Here's what I'll say. I am very open-minded on the election stuff, and I understand you have a vision, but I would like to see some sort of proposal. My...
But, go ahead.
My obligation tonight is the 15 things, and making sure there's adequate staffing to get those done. Those are what are in the city code, that's what the statutes require. That's what I'm focused on. I think the legislative tracker is an unformed idea, and there may be a less expensive way to accomplish the goal of having it be, I don't know, and I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know. Again, I need to see a proposal on that.
Well, if I may say, I don't believe every department comes here and gives you a proposal for every line item of what they're exactly going to do with the budget, and so I have, you know, done research to come up with these numbers as accurately as possible, but that's not the standard that every department is held to.
What I'm saying is, you're just saying, I want, I need to buy software. I'm agreeing with him. I'm saying, I want to help you do this, but I need to know what you're talking about.
Let's do this, Clerk Reed. Let's, I just want to keep order up here, and I've got a lot of lights of different aldermen, so I'm happy to come back to you at a certain point, and you can jot down things that you want to respond to. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you. I thought that conversation was going to go on a little longer, so some of my thoughts are as yet unformed. I mean, traditionally, the city clerk's office has been to keep records, and I understand your vision for the office and that you ran on that vision. That's not necessarily the reality of the way the clerk's office is run. I understand you want to move in that direction. That's fine if you want to move in that direction, but that wasn't a promise, that's something that you're going to work toward. You know what? That doesn't help.
Order, please.
I agree with Alderman Rainey, having used the information provided by the county clerk. That's in an Excel spreadsheet format. You can add columns, you can sort it, you can do all sorts of things with it. That should give you the information that you need to keep track of who you're contacting and their responses. There's, so there's a lower-cost way of doing some of the things that you want to do. When you mentioned at some point about VPAC, I looked up VPAC. I have no idea what VPAC is, and you can tell me later what it is, but I also asked a representative of the League of Women Voters, because I'm assuming that they're out trying to encourage people to register to vote as well. I have to say that I'm really uncomfortable about the clerk's office being in charge of sending what sounds like, and I may be wrong, an army of people outgoing door-to-door asking people whether they're voting or not, and if they're not, why they should be voting and things like that. Again, that's not been a traditional route that the clerk's office has taken, and there's a sense that may be crossing the line between our very important role as a city council and city staff of being nonpartisan. And I want to be real careful because this is, I mean, this is something that you can err on real quickly without intending to do that. I brought up the issue about the car, only because if you're asking for another individual in order to drive that car, it's actually taking a deputy city clerk away from the duties in the office, and I see the duties in the office as the most important thing. I got a phone call today from a woman in my ward who had gone over to your office asking about an absentee ballot, was given, first of all, no one showed up. After ringing the bell for a while, someone finally showed up, gave her a wrong application, then couldn't, when she pointed out it was a wrong application, told her that the information she wanted was not available, and she asked if you were there so she could ask a question of you. You were not there, and when asked when you would be there, was told they didn't know. So I just, again, I think you can appreciate the fact that we do get phone calls like this. I mean, when one of our constituents has a question rather than dialing 311, they'll call us and they'll ask, and I don't have an explanation for it. So I need some more answers before I feel comfortable in voting for anything other than the city manager's proposed budget. I do think that right now we have to be very judicious about how we spend our money, and I do see that there are other ways for you to accomplish what it is that you're trying to accomplish, but in a much more cost-effective manner.
May I respond to? Now, let's, because I got a lot of people up here that want to have some just discussion, and then I'll go to you. If you put your light on, I got an order here. Alderman Ravel.
Well, I certainly, as with my strong League of Women Voters background, really appreciate the city clerk's desire to promote greater voter registration and voter participation in our community, and I agree, it would be, we do want to strive to improve our track record there for our star communities rating. And I was, I'm glad to see that there is a small addition in this proposed budget for election supplies, but I have to second what Alderman Fisk just mentioned about, you know, given our current really severe budget constraints, it's important to look for ways to achieve these really important vision and goals in ways that aren't going to put us over the budget. And in connection with the election and VPAC, I am familiar with VPAC because the League of Women Voters has been very active in putting together this voter participation coalition, and they've been, and it's a lot of nonprofits in Evanston working together in a very coordinated fashion to do really much more comprehensive outreach in the community for voter registration. And I think that coalition would welcome the opportunity to meet with the city clerk in his office and strategize and come up with plans and do all kinds of really terrific things for our upcoming elections. So I would really encourage city clerk to be, to work within the budget that we are looking at tonight and achieve these really great things in our next election.
Thank you, Alderman Ravel. Alderman Rainey?
I'd just...
Okay. Alderman Wilson?
I think Alderman Fisk kind of covered it, but it sounds like this, one of these, one of the software products you're talking about is something to get the voter rolls and basically go door-to-door and figure out if people are voting in all the elections. Is that a fair characterization?
It would provide us with, yes, addresses phone numbers and voting histories of folks, as well as an organized system that we can share with folks so we can create, you know, either a door-to-door or phone campaign to let people know when the election is, what's on the ballot, and get a voter, a nonpartisan voter guide to those folks.
Okay, but, so, and I am troubled by that idea because it sounds kind of good, but if you're contacting people individually and you're keeping some sort of record, I'm not comfortable that I could always, you know, you might not always be the clerk. If we're going to make a list of everybody in Evanston and when they voted, and somebody's making notes about their voting habits, I think voters would be very troubled to have an idea that somebody's keeping a database about their voting habits, like who's to keep them from saying, you know, oh, probably votes Republican, or probably votes whatever. I mean, you know, some sort of note-taking database is, that's kind of disturbing.
That wouldn't be the function of the clerk's office, to note whether folks are voting Republican, and that exists. I mean, that software exists that you can, campaigns can purchase. What the office is doing is, in a nonpartisan fashion, other cities around the country have done it, reaching out to voters, letting them know where they can vote, when they can vote, what their rights are, what's on the ballot, and increasing their overall awareness of elections.
Okay, and I'm just not, to Alderman Fisk's point, I'm not comfortable paying somebody to go door-to-door to do that. So it's just, it's not, it's not practical. It's not practical to send somebody door-to-door to 75,000 people or, I guess, not all, you know, eligible to vote, not all 18, but to send people door-to-door and phone banking, you know, paying for that just doesn't sound reasonable to me.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Clerk Reed, and then I've got Alderman Braithwaite, and then Alderman Russimmons.
So I want to address a few points that were raised. You know, passports is not a vital function of the clerk's office. Real estate transfer stamps is written into the code to fall under the collector's office, but the council members were fine with those services, those non-core functions falling within the clerk's office, and taking up, as well as mail, and taking up a large portion, a good portion of what the clerk's office did. So if you're fine with that, I think you should also be fine with the clerk's office actually getting more in its lane and focusing on elections, increasing voter participation. As far as Alderman Fisk, your point about the lower cost, an Excel spreadsheet isn't going to meet the needs that we have to make sure that folks, that we can increase voter participation. An Excel spreadsheet doesn't create walk lists, it doesn't allow us to very easily crunch numbers and see who is voting in certain elections. The software makes the process run a lot smoothly, smoother, and allows us to share that information with other folks. You know, and again, I've worked for nonprofits prior to being in the clerk's office. I am very attuned to what it crosses the line into partisan politics, and I am able to make sure the clerk's office stays within proper guidelines and will work with the legal department to ensure that everything that we do falls within, in the law. You know, and then, you know, I'll leave it there and let some of the other aldermen speak.
Thank you, Clerk Reed. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I guess to Clerk Reed and members of the council, I'm looking at the time, it's now 10:30, and, you know, as we discussed earlier in rules, it's difficult to make good decisions at a late hour. And so, to the clerk, I just want to acknowledge you and all of your efforts in what you're bringing to the office, which includes, obviously, a large number of volunteers. What's clear to me tonight and at this hour is that we have a very difficult issue, and that's balancing a $5 million budget that we all pay taxes for. And I just hope by those of you who decide to stay and listen to this conversation that, you know, we've heard the numbers, we went through the balancing of this budget, and I'm hoping that you realize that myself being one of the black members on council, that this isn't inequity. This is just strictly numbers in a budget, and we all have to deal with that, from the people who make the decision and those that have to pay the taxes. And so, I'm comfortable with following this budget that the staff has laid out, and I think to Clerk Reed, you still have three more years of work on city council, and so I'm sure with the efforts of the volunteers and with budget opportunities for the future, I hope that we will all, I've said this before, it isn't a one-man show. We operate and we function as a full council, so I'd like to respectfully call the question and move us to our next...
If I may make one point, what we're talking about, when you factor in passports and you factor in the $30,000 that we have left over, we're really talking about $20,000 to $25,000. So this isn't going to make or break the budget. It is a small dollar amount that we're talking, it is a relatively small dollar amount that we're talking about. So I hope that is also of clear understanding, and that small dollar amount means that this office can do a whole lot more.
Alderman Wilson?
We want you to have what you need to do the job, okay? That's important to all of us. But as we go through the next year, when you find a software package, like, you know, bring us the, bring it to us, okay? How much does it cost? What does it do? Just the idea that you're going to need, whatever it is, $50,000, $80,000 to pursue an idea, that's not budgeting. We need to know what you need. Did you, did the staff get the actual training numbers for previously? I don't know if you guys...
Yeah.
What was the actual?
Very widely.
Okay. What would be the average?
Yes, Alderman Wilson, members of council, the average was about $3,300 for three of the last four years, with an outlier in 2016 of $10,000 spent by Clerk Green in 2016.
Okay, so the $3,300 was...
Was the average. We had, Alex, if I may, it was, just read them off to me. Oh, sorry, get close. But it was, yes, $3,300. I'm comfortable with that as an average for the past three out of four years.
And we've got $2,000 as the amount in the budget?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'd be okay increasing it to the average for the training because obviously the training is an important component to this whole thing. So I would move that we move the one single line item to 33 instead of 2,000 to provide the training.
Second. Alderman Wilson, can you move the whole amendment?
Well, I think we have to move the amendment first and then...
Okay. All right. We would have to move that, is there? I've got a bunch of lights on still here. A lot of people want to talk. Alderman Russimmons?
So this is tough because Clerk Reed was elected by the people at a very high margin... margin to do a job that he was very consistent in speaking about transparency and voter participation. One thing that I can say I learned at the NLC conference is that we are really not that weak in that area compared to other communities. So I just want to say that, just based on what I learned about what other communities are doing, we're, we're doing well in that area.
Overall, the nation's not doing well.
The concern that I have is that, as Alderman Sufferton pointed out, there are specific job duties that I'm, I'm understanding have not been met consistently and completely. And it's hard to argue in support of more dollars into the office, not understanding why the, the minutes have been inconsistent and the absences that I've heard as well in the office. I do, however, believe that you should have money for software. I'm just unsure about the additional money for, for additional staff, and I reached out to you last Thursday to ask for a better understanding and clarification on how I could advocate for your office and for more money, and I didn't get an answer. So it's hard now to get this information and not be able to come up with questions to make a really informed decision. So if you have information, and we, at the, at the conference, we were introduced to different software, and I don't know if those were any software that you were considering, but if we had more information on what that was, I, I would want to approve you having money for software. I just don't know what the software is, the cost of the software, the exact software, and if you've competitively priced and shopped that software.
All right, thank you, thank you, Alderman Rue Simmons. Alderman Fleming? And then we have Alderman Rainey, and then there are no more lights.
I'll be quick, I'm almost serious up here. So I do agree with Alderman Rue Simmons in that, you know, I'm, I'm okay with some software costs. I, I do not have any interest in micromanaging what that software is. City manager, can you please reiterate what our, I guess I'll say, policy is in terms of departmental purchases? I know a lot we see on the bills list, some things we see on the credit card list, you know, so on and so forth, but does everything that, I'm assuming everything that our departments purchase do not come to city council for approval? Is that correct?
Everything comes before you in the bills list.
In the bills list, right, but when they go out and buy it initially, they don't come to us and say, I'm going to buy whatever they're buying?
You know, it depends. Certainly, any, any purchase over $20,000 comes before the council, and then there are specific programs and initiatives that come before the council that are less dollars than that. But by, by and large, things that are under $20,000 don't come before the council, they appear on the bills list. So every, every transaction appears on the bills list.
And from history of those who are here, when Clerk Green purchased, if he did purchase things, that went through the same process? He, if it was over $20,000, he, it would have come to us, other than that, it was on the bills list like everything else?
I'm unaware of any purchase over $20,000 that was made by the clerk.
Okay, so I would also support the clerk having a line item in here for software, you know, assuming the other departments have software. One thing I would encourage the clerk to do is to speak with our IT department, because I don't know, you know, I don't, I know no computers, so there might be something that they know, there might be something they can help you make, you know, I just think we should look in-house first to see what we can come up with. And then my other question is, the $30,000 surplus, Mr. Lyons, that Ms. Clerk Reed is talking about, is that already allocated in the budget? I imagine most departments don't have surpluses.
Well, and there really aren't surpluses. I mean, there, there's an overall fund balance in, in the city, and so we don't operate with the funding where if you have additional money left over that is spent by the department in the next year, there's, doesn't it work that way?
Okay, all right, so I would also, I don't, I don't have an amount that I put forward, I don't know, maybe $5,000 or so for software purchases, and then, you know, the clerk needs to follow the process that all other departments follow in terms of purchasing and going on the bills list and so on and so forth.
Is there a second for, I'm keeping track of all these amendments, is there a second for that amendment of $5,000 line item for software?
I guess that'd be a final amendment to maybe Alderman Wilson's motion.
You're not, no, I've got it, no, it's, it's, is there a second to that? All right, seeing no second, that motion is not, is not on there. Okay, Alderman Rue Simmons, excuse me, Alderman Rainey?
Yes, the clerk, Clerk Reed, you mentioned a phrase you used several times, it's only $25,000. I just want to share with you what $25,000 is. In my ward, when the tax bills came out, I took a look at a whole variety of tax bills on the city's website, My Place, and a whole lot of properties, especially condos, under $5,000 for their tax bill. $25,000 equals the city portion of 25 condominium units, the city portion of their tax bill. A thousand dollars for the city portion of 25 condominium units. So 25 families are sending to the city $1,000 in taxes. So that means a lot to people, that, that $1,000. So their tax bill is $5,000, and about 20% of the portion was to the city. And so that means a lot, $25,000.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Rue Simmons, and then I have no more lights on up here.
I'd like to move the clerk, and I don't know if I'm doing this right, but I would like to see the clerk have $8,000 to use how he sees fit combination of software and part-time or seasonal support for him to expand transparency and voter turnout.
So just so I'm clear, so you're suggesting an $8,000 increase to the 183,000?
So that's not including a new full-time deputy clerk?
Correct, so that you're adding 8,000, sort of almost like miscellaneous to be used as he sees fit to the 183 that's in the city manager's budget. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Let's go ahead and, and take a vote on that, on that motion. City clerk, if you could take the roll.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Fleming?
Yes.
Alderman Fisk?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Sufferton?
Yes.
Alderman Ravel?
No.
Alderman?
So we have four noes and four yeses, and we're missing our Alderman win tonight, tonight. So in terms of adding $8,000 additional to the clerk's budget, bringing that total clerk's budget to 191,000, I am a yes vote on that. Okay, Alderman Wilson has withdrawn his motion. Let's go ahead, is there any other discussion on SP2 with any of the other budget items? Otherwise, we had a, I'd like to, to have a motion to move that.
We need, we need just a second, because we need to recalculate a number so that we were adding $8,000. No, it's 8,000 was, okay. So if I could get a, a new number.
Can we move to the next item then and come back and pass it? It's toward till 11.
Yeah, Alderman Fleming?
Well, I can, I have a budget question, but we can move to the next one, and I can ask it when we get to that dollar.
All right, Alderman Braithwaite, why don't you take us on SP3?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to move item SP3, Freedom of Information Act policy revision. City clerk recommends city council approve the amendments of the city of Evanston Freedom of Information Act policy, known as FOIA. Clerk Reed and city staff have worked together to incorporate the clerk's suggestions changes into the new FOIA policy. Staff requests the direction from the city council upon review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? 32, 32 of the packet, thank you.
Okay, I guess, I prefer the one that was proffered by the law department. The particular issue I still have with the other version, the main issue is the idea that somebody could still put in anything they want in that request field, or they could.
And what page are you on, sorry?
You know what, I had all the budget stuff up, and I didn't get a chance to pull this stuff up by page, so.
FOIA policy starts on page 32, we got that.
Right.
He's, he's making a specific change.
I'm not making a change, I'm, I'm just suggesting that we utilize the, the law department's version. Page 42 of the, the one suggested by the clerk's office at the top, it has a provision that says, "All requests will be restricted from public view until 72 hours after the delivery of the response unless otherwise directed by the requister." Requests for singular or personal police reports will be released only, only to the requister. So the, the problem with that is that, number one, I think it should be sort of, if we were to do something like that, the requister should have to affirmatively say, okay, yeah, release it, as opposed to having to go back and like, you know, realize that it's otherwise going to be released. The other thing is that without, it's, it's the same problem we had before. Anybody could put anything in there, and this could get, this stuff could get released that would contain personal information. If the request itself contains the personal information, this would not solve that problem. So if I put in, I want the, all the reports relating to victim so-and-so that happened on such-and-such, if it's in the request field and it's released, that, that doesn't solve the problem, the problem's still there, you're still identifying that stuff. So I think it's just better to stick with the, releasing to the requisters only and keeping as it is. Now, the other, I think there was, I'm looking for it, now I can't find the page. I think both versions had something in here about all of the boards and commissions have to have their financial informa, their financial disclosures published, is that?
I didn't see that.
All right, am I, anybody's got that?
I believe that's correct.
Mr. Ford, so what page was that on now? That's what I was looking for.
For the, um, Alderman Wilson, for the city's proposal, I mean, for the staff proposal.
We can't, we can't hear.
For the staff proposal, I believe it's page 38.
Okay.
And then for the clerk's, Clerk Reed's proposal, I believe it's on page 43.
Okay, so the point is that everybody has to prepare those anyway and file those so they're available. But the idea of publishing in, in one place all of the board and commission members' personal information, it's one thing for us as elected officials, it's another thing for somebody who volunteers for like a, you know, a two-session or, you know, some sort of small committee or, you know, once-a-month thing or, you know, once-a-year type of thing, to have all their stuff published on a website that's, you know, out there for people to find on searches, that's, that seems to me that's a little bit stretching the limits of transparency. And again, if somebody wanted it, it's available in the clerk's office by request. So if somebody had an issue with a person, you do that, but just to kind of, you know, float it out there and, and subject people to, you know, potential harassment or whatever, that's a little bit uncomfortable feeling.
Well, so, if I may respond to that and a few other questions. One, as far as the releasing of requests, since the system has been down, we regularly receive FOIA requests for all of the FOIAs that have been filed. And according to FOIA statute, we have to release the name of the requister, what the requister requested, and if the person so asks for all of the responsive documents. And we've been receiving those requests faithfully every single week to get those, and that means that my staff has to take time to download all of the FOIAs, go through, and, you know, most stuff isn't redacted, isn't eligible to be redacted, because if it's a name, it's not counted as a personal identifier, and everything that you put in that request field, as well as the name of the requister, is public information. Secondly, to, to the last point that you made, I mean, these are financial disclosure filings, these are ethics filings, if you sign up and you're on a board or commission that deals with money or deals with using, with allocating city resources, I think darn well you should, the public should be able to very easily access that information. If someone can come into the office and get it, we might as well put it online for folks to get. And if the, if your phone number is in that, then yes, your phone number will be redacted, but as far as what your financial encumbrances are, that will be, that should be available online in public.
Alderman, Alderman Fisk?
Thanks. Well, I agree with Alderman Wilson. I had another issue as well, and it's really hard to sort of sort through these two documents, it's just a little bit confusing. I, I want to make sure that there, that the law department plays a role as being a co-FOIA officer, because we're going to rely on them to do the redactions and, and to advise the clerk on any potential liability to the city. So I don't feel comfortable with making the clerk the single FOIA officer. My understanding is that we didn't do that, and, you know, you're going to have to leave the room if you keep interrupting. I'm going to insist on that. This is.
Order.
This is, this is time for us to be discussing up here.
This is the time for the council, please.
So previously, if, Corporation Council, if you could just remind me, in the past, we had, not only was the clerk the FOIA officer, did we have, did the law department play a role in that as well, or what, what did we do before?
I believe that there, based on what was proposed in October, October 6.
Henry? Mike?
Assistant City Attorney Henry Ford, I believe that it's up to the council to designate FOIA officers. It can be the clerk, it can be any other city staff that it so designates. My understanding, based on the history, I'm not sure whether a specific law department attorney was named as a FOIA officer, but that's within the council's authority.
I think the question was, just a follow-up, is what role did the law department play under the last city clerk, is what I hear Alderman Fisk asking.
We would respond directly to FOIA requests, we would compile information from various departments, we would redact the information, we would see if it was, it was within any exceptions under the Freedom of Information Act for distribution, so we would handle all that.
There you go.
So my recommendation would be that the city clerk be the FOIA officer, one FOIA officer with a representative from the law department to be the secondary FOIA officer.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Well, can I clarify? We already did vote to make the clerk the FOIA officer before.
Right, right. Yes, we did, which Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fisk wasn't changing that.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure.
Point of clarification.
She wasn't changing it by adding another fourth.
She was at, she was adding as a secondary, from the, from the general council's office.
Which changes it.
Which would change it, that's why I asked if there was a second to the motion. Is there a second to the motion? Okay, if there's no second to the motion, then what we have stands. Okay, Alderman Wilson?
So I would move that we adopt the policy set forth in pages 34 through 38, with the exception of paragraph eight on page 38, and removing paragraph eight on page 38. So adopt it with the exclusion of paragraph eight on page 38.
All right, we're just hanging out, let me.
What about on page 42, the top of 42?
Can you say that again, Alderman Wilson?
42 is not part of it.
So people can.
So it's, the policy set forth in pages 34 through So it's, the policy set forth in pages thirty-four through thirty-eight, with paragraph eight on page thirty-eight removed.
All right.
Second.
Okay, page, okay, paragraph eight, removed, okay. And that was seconded by Alderman, Fisk, Fisk, thank you, okay. Okay, Alderman Fleming? Do we want to vote on that?
Do you? I think she's speaking.
She had her, she had her, we're still in discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry. All right, so, I'm trying to keep it together here, my eyes hurt. So I, this was hard to read, but I, my understanding of the next request system prior to it coming down was that when a request went in, everything was, you know, properly redacted and then it was up on the next request system, that you could access if you were so interested in looking for things, is that correct? You could search or you could click on some link that took you to whatever the FOIA thing was?
Yes, that is correct.
And that was also in place before we took office?
Before I took office, yes.
Right, okay.
To a certain level.
I mean, whatever was public, could be public was there?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, I know that there have been some redaction issues, and I think that I would like to use the next request system as it is. I do not like the option that was in here about things automatically going public unless they opted out, because I think people aren't in the habit of remembering to opt out.
So.
Well, let me finish my thought. And it says that the system at this time does not have an option for you to opt out, and I think that's going to be too difficult for people to opt out, so I don't mind it going online, but I think we need to make it easier for people to, we either need to ask them if it can go online when we deliver the documents, so that they can think about it once they see their documents, and so it's not maybe an automatic seventy-two hours, you know, we have some kind of language in there, when we send you your thing, we can say, "This is eligible for public information, would you be okay with it going on next request" or something? I don't want to put the responsibility on the person to remember to opt out. I also think that people maybe want to look at the documents before they decide, because maybe it's containing more information than they thought it would and they don't want it online. But I think in this age of lack of trust of government, I think it's better to just put the things that we can online, and if someone wants to spend their afternoon perusing FOIA and finding what they can, then God bless them. I also would hope that things that are of more interest to the general public, in terms of, I know like, we had a request for legal fees and all that kind of thing, that that could go on the open portal system, so that people are not searching through pages and pages of next requests, but if they're interested in whatever public information there is out there, that can go on the open portal database page, and people can look there to more easily access things. Because I guess my feeling is if I am really interested in uncovering whatever through FOIA, and I make that request and you get it to me, I can then share it with whoever I want. And so if I'm really looking to promote whatever it is I discovered, I can do that anyway once I have the document. So if it's, if it's something public that people are okay putting on next request, I would support a plan to do that, but we have to make sure we do the legwork to make sure that happens, which means proper redactions the first time and allowing someone to see the information, and then for them to say, "Yes, I'm okay with this going online." I don't want everything that is published to just automatically go online, I don't think that that is the most responsible, but I also don't want, you know, the Clerk's Office being every Friday with hundreds of FOIA requests just because people think we're hiding whatever.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming.
If I may make a note to a point Alderman Fleming raised. So next request, Deputy City Manager Storey, I had a conversation, they are able to add a section that lets people know right in the box that, hey, this is going to be public, right in the request field, that this will be made public, and then as you noted, that yes, down the road, they're looking into adding a feature that would allow folks to opt out. But just letting folks know on the front end that anything you put in that request box is public information, I think.
Okay, just clarify then, so you're saying what I put in the request box, if I put my name and my address and I'm looking for.
Whatever it is.
Parking tickets on my street, that's public?
Yes, and in fact, someone else could come in, and what's been happening is that folks have been coming in every single week FOIA-ing all of the FOIAs.
Right, I understand that. But so, then the report that I get back is not, that box is not telling me that whatever report I get back from my FOIA request is also public?
So, and what is in here is that, you know, the request can be public, but the response and the request are two separate things.
Right, so I'm having you clarify.
The response doesn't have to be public, but the request should be. Whether we make all of the responses immediately public or not, the request itself, I believe, should be public. Because that's what folks are FOIAing for.
Well, I mean, if it says on there, I guess what I'm also concerned about is if I would like to see whatever I would like to see via FOIA, I might not want my neighbors to know I'm looking at that, right? If I, if I want to look up what my neighbor, if I want to look up something that is private, but I have to FOIA it, I might not want everyone to know that's what I'm looking for. And so I don't know how we get around that, I don't know what the FOIA law is on that, but I want to respect, I want to respect women who come in for domestic violence or any other thing that they're coming in for, that their name is not listed there as Cicely Fleming came in to get her domestic violence report. And I know some things are redacted, and I don't have the energy to get into what that is, but I don't want someone deterred from using FOIA if they need it because their name is now on the website.
And that's why, my version of the policy says that if someone comes in for individual records, individual police reports, that those will not be made public. So the scenario that you brought up wouldn't happen under the policy that I proposed.
Just, just so I'm clear, if somebody says, "I want to FOIA Mayor Haggerty's emails for the last week," and somebody wrote to me about a terrible incident that his daughter is having at a school, that response under this policy that you submitted to the attorney's office, that would be public, that response. All of my emails don't just go to the Requestor, but they would go public, and that email in which somebody sent me something that isn't protected by some special category would be public, is that correct?
It, I mean, potentially, anyone could come in and FOIA your emails and release your emails at any point, so.
Correct, but the difference, just so, so it's correct. So I mean, the point is, anyone with any of us, or anybody that works for the government, can FOIA any of our stuff, I mean, that's the whole idea of sunshine laws. The, what the law says, as I understand it, is that the government is required to turn over the response to the Requestor. The difference, or the new policy that you're proposing, is that with the exception of police reports and things that are requested, all of the responses would be public, meaning it doesn't just go to the Requestor, but it goes to everybody. It's open to the world, anybody can come and see, you know, all of the emails. Which again, we may say, hey, no, that's the way government should be, I should be able to see the mayor's emails at any day. Now, I've said this before, people email, not just me, but all of the folks up here and other people in our government, all sorts of emails, okay, about, I've, you know, lost my job, and can you, can you help me, is there something in the city or something else, you know, around town? You know, my son or daughter, let me tell you about my neighbor, oh my God, you know, and they go off about their neighbor. And again, it's okay, you can FOIA us, but the question is, should that be available and put out publicly to, you know, to the whole world? And right now, the next request system, when we have the next request system, and I'm supportive of this, that the next request system allows any of us to go and see what has been FOIA-ed here in our city, and we could say, "Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm really interested in seeing that response to the request about the parking tickets on, you know, whatever, whatever street," and you could then get that.
Yes, yes, if I may add to your thing, so, one, if someone sends you an email that is personal, and Attorney Ford can maybe add to this, my understanding is that that kind of email, that kind of personal communication could be redacted. And thus far, your emails have been FOIA-ed a lot, I haven't seen a single email like that, and that's been released through FOIA.
Well, we could look at the email I just got.
That's been released through FOIA.
Well, here's, here's the thing, as I understand FOIA, and, you know, our attorney could help us here, my understanding of FOIA is in part, I want to know everybody that is communicating to our elected officials. And so I can't then say, "Oh, you know, I'm not going to show that, you know, Bob and Steve were communicating," because this doesn't look to be city business, you know, this looks to be a little personal. I don't think that you can distinguish quite that, quite that way. I think the law is clear about, you know, juveniles and sexual assault and maybe some other things, but that's my understanding, but, Mr. Ford?
Pursuant to.
We can't hear you.
Pursuant to Section 3B of the Freedom of Information Act, the only obligation is to produce the information to the Requestor. That's the only obligation. Everything that is beyond that, in terms of opening up the request to, for public viewing, that's above and beyond what is required of the FOIA, of the FOIA statute. And then in addition to that, there's exemptions for what can and cannot be disclosed on the FOIA under Section 7, and it's a laundry list, again, of those exemptions. So it's voluminous and it depends on the situation.
And unwarranted invasion of personal privacy is one of those things, and that would fall under that category, allowing it to be redacted.
I would think that, again, if we have a situation where, to stake any of us, our emails on a weekly basis are FOIAed, that's putting a lot of confidence in our system here to make sure that we have properly, you know, redacted everything that, everything that we can, because we're going to release it publicly instead of just to the Requestor. I've got a lot of lights up here and I want to get around so we can make some decisions here and move on. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and that's, that's exactly why I made the motion that we have a backup FOIA officer in the Law Department on page thirty-two, and I'm very interested. My life's an open book, you can all, you all know what it is. But I am interested in protecting the public. I have a letter here tonight from a woman in my ward who is concerned about the possible loss of private contact information, because the state of Illinois is requiring that owners in a condominium building that their contact information be released. This is a big issue. So on page thirty-two, it says, "City staff suggests keeping current procedures in place where responsive records are given only to the Requestor and not published to the general public." This is different than the policy being put forth by the city clerk, which releases all FOIA records to the public seventy-two hours after they are fulfilled, with the exception of police reports. In this scenario, the onus remains on the Requestor to know and understand that their requests will be made public, and if they would so choose to have it remain private, they would have to contact the city clerk to make that request. So if you forget to make that phone call, or whatever, that information is out there. And I, I think that this is, I would be, I'd support next request, there's no question about that, but I just don't think the public understands this, and I think that we're putting, we're making people's lives more difficult and possibly embarrassing and intrusive by going forth with this without, until the software allows for a box to be placed on that, on that page where you can make that request that you do not want that information to be made public. But doing it the other way, I think at this point is, is, is not the right thing to do.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk, Alderman Rainey?
Mr. Mayor, I support a hundred percent Alderman Wilson's motion, but I'm wondering if Alderman Wilson would support separating the motion and excluding number eight from your motion, because I support making public at the request of a Requestor the disclosure statements of boards and commissions.
But, yeah, it's, and it already is, but what paragraph eight does is it publishes it online, puts it on the internet permanently. So I mean, like, you know, you run a commission like ten years ago.
Makes it really easy to get, yeah.
Well, and for the elected officials and for many people, the Cook County disclosure is available online, you can go on there and pull it up, you can pull up mine, super easy. Couple of buttons.
Mine too.
And it's there, yours is too.
I'm just like you, Don, believe it or not, mine's available too.
No, I know, all of ours are.
Except mine, mine's very embarrassing, because mine is not applicable.
Well, sadly, mine is probably, pretty much like.
So what if the language was that the elected officials was online, if it's already online somewhere else, or we had a link to the county, so we don't have to duplicate work?
I mean, it's already there, so it's.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but if we add the language, because I didn't know it was there and I'm not looking, but if we add the language that the elected officials is available in the county or is already online or whatever.
But that has nothing to do with FOIA, so this is a FOIA policy, so that's all like stuff that doesn't have to do with FOIA. Yeah, so I think that, you know, so I think we're in agreement on that, on that concept. Is it my turn?
Sure, it is your turn.
All right, thank you. You know, the stuff that we're talking about has nothing to do with how the government's operating, okay? When, if you have an insurance claim because a spouse has died, or your child has been in a horrifying accident, or to the mayor's point, people write to us with a lot of, you know, different personal things that are going on in their lives that have nothing to do with the government. A lot of questions about, "This terrible thing happened to me, who can I reach out to?" So the idea that because someone's put a FOIA request in, if you provide it to the Requestor, my hope would be is that if they got that information, just basic humanity would dictate that they wouldn't go out and put that on the internet. You know, so by us saying, "We're just going to put everything like that up there," frankly, I remain amazed that we're continuing to have that conversation. The stuff that got inadvertently posted, it's a pretty good list of really awful things that people would not have, they'd be crushed to know was published online. And, you know, we have a lot of responsibilities, but one of those is to, to look out for our constituents and our population, and just, this stuff has nothing to do with government. This, frankly, this is hateful to suggest that these kinds of personal things should get published on the internet for Google searches, you know, these, these stay, you know, these stay there forever. You know, some, yeah, so, the motion's pending, I don't know if there's.
Okay, all right, so Alderman Rue Simmons, and then we've got Clerk Reed wants to make some remarks, and then I'm going to take a vote unless I see a light on.
Just wanted to vote on it.
Okay, all right. Clerk Reed, you're going to get the last word, and then we're taking a vote.
I'm in full agreeance with the vote, but what I will say is that, you know, if this is a major concern of folks, I hope, I've mentioned to several members on this diocese about the daily crime bulletin, if we're very concerned about, if we're truly very concerned about embarrassing or shaming residents, we have a daily crime bulletin that lists the names, addresses, and ages and charges of folks who haven't been convicted of a crime, and it goes, it's on our website going back to 2003, it's emailed blasted out to hundreds, if not thousands, of people every single day. I would like to see a motion to take that down as well, because these are people who haven't been convicted of a crime.
All right, I'm going to jump in here, and I don't have a light on. I'm going to use my professional language, I had to stink. I understand, that is why I asked the chief not to produce mugshots, and I asked the chief not to produce daily crime bulletins until I learned it was the law.
I'm not, I'm not saying not producing daily crime bulletins, but I'm saying we don't have to put it online going back to 2003, and we don't have to release it, we do have to produce it, and someone can come in and FOIA it, but.
Let's stick on, let's stick on the topic here, because we, that's, let's stick to our FOIA. We have a, we have a motion, and it was seconded, that motion was to approve the pages thirty-four through thirty-eight, removing paragraph eight from that, that was a motion by. Excuse me? Okay, that was.
It was seconded.
That was a seconded by Alderman Fisk. He didn't accept, yeah, Alderman Rainey's suggestion, so this is the motion on the floor, accept and approve as the FOIA policy, page thirty-four through thirty-eight, removing paragraph eight. City clerk, could you take the role, please?
Alderman Rainey? Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes 8 to 0. Okay, let's move up to SP 2, which is Resolution 94-R-17, City Manager. Do you have an update on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so we're back to the main ordinance, excuse me, resolution for the budget, which begins on page 35 of your packet, with the one adjustment only. The new number is, which is in the second, excuse me, the third whereas, replacing 335-456-008 would go to 335-464-008. Mayor Haggerty, you had expressed an interest in removing some additional dollars from this, dealing with the library. As I think everyone knows, the council is not required to adopt the library's budget under Illinois law. Over the last several years, the library budget has been included in this annual resolution so that there's a consolidated budget amount for all funds in the city. If the council would so choose to remove the debt service and capital funds 186 and 187, that could be done. We would recommend leaving the library's general fund, the 185, as part of this, because we have to transmit this resolution with all of the levies to the county, and while the library board's approval of the budget should be sufficient, we have never relied on that, we've always relied on this. And so, we would recommend that, if, Mr. Mayor, if you wish to make that change, that we would leave in 185, and if you wish to take 186, 187 out, you could do that. So, otherwise, the number is 335-464-008.
I mean, the council, the council tonight agreed that in one of our upcoming, upcoming meetings, hopefully in January, we can have the library come and talk about their, and talk about their capital budget. My conversation with the city manager earlier was just concern over the fact that, again, I'm on, if you're on page 27, we've got there not only the operating budget that was approved this evening and the levy for that, but the 186 and 187, which is the debt service, and then the library capital, which was the 10 million. My concern was just that this body has not had an opportunity to really drill into that number and get comfortable, particularly relative to other capital expenses and projects. So, I, you know, the tradition, I guess, has been that it has been included in this budget, and if we're all, you know, understand what we're going to be doing in January, as we drill down uncomfortable, I guess, just leaving it the way, the way it is, as long as, you know, folks up here understand we're going to talk about that. Okay, then...
I move that we adopt the resolution as amended to the 335-464-008.
Is there a second?
Did I get the number right?
Second.
Okay, City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Ravel.
All right. SP 2, Resolution 94-R-17, fiscal year 2018 budget of the city of Evanston has passed 8 to 0. We have a budget for 2018. Thank you, everybody, for your hard work, particularly the city, and everyone else that has worked and provided comments and feedback on this budget. So, I think we have a good budget for 2018. Let's go ahead now and move into the consent agenda. Alderman Rainey, could you took us through M1, and then to Administration and Public Works?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The consent agenda approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of November 20, 2017, and November 27, 2017. It's for action. Administration and Public Works Committee recommend your approval of payroll through November 13, from November 13 through the 26, $2,904,381.91. The bills list through December 6, $4,313,546.97. Credit card activity, not including Amazon purchases, ending October 31, $156,529.88. I move approval of these items.
Second.
Okay, City Clerk, could you take the roll?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
Okay. M1, A1, A2, 1 pass, the city council, 8 to 0 on the consent agenda.
Amazon credit card activity ending October 31, $8,961.68. Move approval.
Second.
City Clerk, could you take the roll?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Abstaining.
No. Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
All right, A2.2 passes 7 to 0, with Alderman Sufferton abstaining.
We request approval for funding to the Black Business Consortium of Evanston Northshore for an amount not to exceed $1,800 for costs associated with the Latour de Noir Enterprise Evanston and Black Business Expo.
Second.
We're going to, yeah, we'll go through it all, and then we'll get a sec, we'll get a second, unless you want to pull it. I like that enthusiasm, though, Alderman Rue Simmons.
It's a great project, and we're all going to go. We're recommending council approval also to review and place the 2017 postponed issuance report on file, requesting that we approve the city manager execute a purchase order for the sole source repair and upgrade of the Cargill acubrine system from Cargill de-icing technology for a total purchase amount of $36,500. Cargill is the sole manufacturer of our acubrine system, and it is a proprietary software. We're requesting approval of change order number 4 to the contract with Structures Construction LLC for the Dempster Street Beach office renovations in the amount of $12,427. This will increase the overall contract amount to $276,319, and will require a 31-day time extension, extending the completion date to January 31, 2018. That's for action. We're asking you to approve the city manager executing a one-year contract extension for management and operations of three city-owned self-park facilities to SP Plus Municipal Services in the amount of $1,513,707 for 2018. This is a one-year extension, one-year renewal. Next, we ask you approval for the fuel purchases for the first six months of fiscal year 2018 in the amount of $450,000 from Gas Depot Oil Company. They are the current Northwest Municipal Conference bid winner through July 5, 2018 for all grades and types of fuel that are utilized by city vehicles. This is for action. We ask you to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with E-Town Tennis. This item is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. City Council has requested to approve Resolution 112-R-17, authorizing the manager to sign notification of grant awards to fund and operate the long-term care ombudsman program for the city of Evanston. Oh, dear. I'm sorry, let's see, okay, came back. City Council approval of Resolution 92-R-17, authorizing the manager to enter into 25 renewal agreements for 12-month lease terms for the artist leases for studios at the Nois Cultural Arts Center. It's for action. Resolution 95-R-17 is for an eighth-month lease agreement for Nois Street Theater at Nois Cultural Arts Center with Mudlark Theater. This is for action. Resolution 111-R-17 is a 12-month new lease agreement for studio space at Nois Cultural Arts Center with David Gista, and that is for vacant studio 109 at the Cultural Arts Resolution 93-R-17 approves the settlement and release of claims in the Yachness versus City of Evanston et al. This is a $3,500,000 settlement payment that will be made by our insurer, and a $1,250,000 payment by the city of Evanston through the insurance fund. Resolution 90-R-17, 2017 budget amendment, it is in the amount of $14,965,532, making a new total of $323,732,986. This amendment is associated with the refinancing debt and involves no new operating or capital expenses. $580,000 involved the final payment for Chicago Main Development, which was originally planned to finish in 2016. The following represents 13 abatement resolutions, A10 through A1013. Resolution 98-R-17 through 110-R-17. These are the GeoBond, General Obligation Bond Series from GeoBond 2008B, 2008C, 2000, and, let's see, 10B, 2011A, 2012A, 2013A, 2013B, 2004A, 2015A, 2015B, 16A, 2017A, 2017C. They are all for action this evening. Next, we have Ordinance 143-017, which increases the gasoline tax. The committee recommended introduction, suspension of the rules, and action tonight. This increases the city gasoline tax from 4 cents to 5 cents per gallon with the effective date of January 1. It is a 1 cent per gallon increase. Ordinance 154-017 is for action, introduction, suspension of the rules, and for action. It increases the athletic contest tax from 8% to 9% with the effective date as of January 1. Ordinance 116-017, amends code, is this off the consent agenda?
Sorry, is this Airbnb?
Yeah.
Yes.
This is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the city.
And Alderman Rainey, was A12, you corrected it to January 1.
Yes.
And is that for action as well? Right now, it says for introduction and action.
Yes, for introduction and action.
And then, A13 is off.
13 is off the consent agenda, yes. Next is Ordinance 159-017, amend city code, resident-only parking districts to include Brummel Street from Ridge Avenue West to Barton Avenue. This is for introduction, suspension of the rules, and action tonight. Ordinance 155-017 decreases the number of Class C1 liquor licenses for Tommy Nevin's Pub located at 1450 Sherman Avenue. It is now closed for business. Staff recommends introduction, suspension of the rules, and action. Ordinance 156-017 decreases the number of Class D liquor licenses for Mumbai Indian Grill located at 1728 Sherman Avenue, reduces the number of licenses from 53 to 52. They are not renewing their liquor license. Staff recommends introduction and action this evening. Ordinance 157-017 decreases the number of Class P3 liquor license for Meta Wine at 600 Main Street. They have closed, and definitely not renewing their license. Staff recommends introduction and action this evening. Ordinance 158-017 decreasing the number of Class D liquor licenses for Asian Cajun 2 located at 1322 Chicago Avenue. They are not renewing their liquor license. Staff recommends suspension of the rules and introduction and action at this meeting. Next is Ordinance 145-017, and this is, amends city code 346A and removes reference to bake-at-home pizzas. It's for action. Ordinance 146-017 decreases the number of Class D liquor licenses for Union Squared Liquor, Union Squared Evanston, decreases the number of Class D from 54 to 53. They're seeking to change their license. Union, that's for action. 147-017 increases the number of Class A liquor licenses for Union Squared Evanston. It goes from zero licenses to one, and issues that license to Union Squared located at 1307 Chicago Avenue. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the Administration Public Works consent agenda.
You've done a heck of a job. Would you mind, with Alderman Wynn being out, doing that one Planning and Development Committee, P1?
Well, that's kind of insulting, given what it is, but I'll do it anyway.
Do you want me to read it, Alderman Rainey?
No, I'll do it, I'll do it. Ordinance 148-017 is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair.
All right, P1 off. Okay, Alderman Braithwaite, if you want to take us through Human Services.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to move item H1, it's the 2017 Emergency Solutions Grant Recommendation totaling $144,304 in 34, YWCA No. 10, that provides housing for individuals and families who are homeless or... And $10,825 to the city of Evanston. I'm following myself, grant administration. So, the funding is the city's 2017 ESG entitlement allocation of $144,344 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. That's for action. I'd also like to move item H2, Resolution 96-R-17, designating the portion of the Custer Avenue between Madison Street and Washington Street as the honorary street name sign for Rick Ferguson Way. That's for action. Also, item H3, Resolution 97-R-17, designating the portion of the whole terrace between Ridge Avenue and Barton Avenue as the honorary street name for Steve Perkins Way. And last, item H4, Ordinance 141-O-17, amending the definition of a food establishment, Title 8, Chapter 6, Section 1. And that's for introduction.
Excellent, thank you. Alderman Rainey, we're back to the Rules Committee. Unless you want a break, I can give it to someone else.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Rules Committee recommends approval of the 2018 city council meeting dates for action tonight. Resolution 113R...
As amended from our earlier meeting.
As amended.
Adding January.
As amended, that's correct. Resolution 113-R-17, amending Section 21 quorum, known as quorum, of the city council rules. That's for action tonight. And O3 is Ordinance 94-017, amending portion of the city code, changing Housing, Homelessness, and Human Relations Commission. Our staff and everyone else recommend suspension of the rules for introduction and action at our meeting this evening. What's next? Oh, gosh, appointments.
Alderman Rainey, could you hold all of the Equity and Empowerment Commission appointments, please?
Okay.
Hold, or take them off, take them off of, okay.
And the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Committee.
And the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Committee, okay, so, okay. So, Mr. Mayor, for appointments, Mr. Mayor has recommended for the Arts Council Jamal Ahmad and Stephen Demarest, MWEBE Malik Kamoké, and Janeth Shambi, and Transportation Parking Ahmad and Stephen Demarest, MWEBE Malik Kamoke, and Janeth Shambi, and Transportation Parking Committee Barbara Miller. These are four actions. I move approval—
Second. All right, City Clerk, could you take the roll?
Oh, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda passes eight to zero. We'll go to the items that were removed. Alderman Rainey, if you want to take us, A37 is the first one.
Wait, 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 I gotta get back there.
E-Town Tennis.
E-Town— oh, that's—
We held that in committee.
We're holding that until our next meeting.
Oh, excuse me, okay, that's been held in committee. Okay, how about A13?
A13, okay, I'm looking for it now. A13 is— okay. Ordinance 160017, amending the city code, hotel motel and vacation rental tax. This has to do with some housekeeping and some billing issues. Staffs recommending suspension of the rules for introduction and action. Doesn't sound like that's going to happen, but I'll move approval anyway.
Alderman Fleming.
So I appreciate that this is going to make it easier for us as a city to collect the tax from the owner of the Airbnb. However, I will not support this because I still feel like we unjustly are taxing the individual Airbnbs while not taxing our commercial Airbnb—or our commercial BnBs.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Alderman Rainey had moved the motion on—
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, could you—
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, we can't suspend the rules.
On—
Because we have—
You're going to object, right? Yeah, because so we can't suspend the rules. So I'll just move introduction.
Okay, so we're gonna—we're gonna go ahead and take the vote?
Yep, for introduction.
For introduction, okay, only for—
Oh, got it, got it.
Okay, for introduction, this is for Ordinance 160-0-17, amending the city code 3-2-4 for the hotel motel and vacation tax rental. City Clerk, could you take the vote, please?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance 160-0-17 passes for introduction, six to two. Okay, Item P1, let's see, who is that?
I'm the chairman.
That's you, Alderman Rainey? This is the planning one, special use?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Ordinance 148017, amending sections of Title VI to add a special educational institution public as a special use within the I-2 district. I move approval.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing no light, City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
All right, P1, Ordinance 148-0-17 passes the City Council seven to one. Okay, let's move on to appointments. Let's see, is there anyone that would like to— let's talk about Equity and Empowerment first. Alder— let's see, is there anyone that wants to move that motion for these individuals?
Oh, I did that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Alderman Fisk.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I ask for these to be removed because I'm going to vote against them. I had a conversation with the mayor about this, and I think this is an opportunity for us to really use the creation of this committee to look forward. And I think that there are some folks that are not represented here that ought to be and some new voices that we need to have when we discuss equity and empowerment. And without any— well, with apologies to the people who are on this list, and there's nothing personal about any of them, but I do think in order for us, as I said at the Human Services Committee years ago, in order for us to effectively address this subject, in my opinion, we need to do a lot of trust building in the community, or else we're just going to have people tune out the way that they've tuned out in the past. And we just can't do that anymore. We really have got to have got to be more forward-thinking and inclusive in the way that we approach especially this issue. I think this is a turning point for the City of Evanston, and we should embrace it and be in a very positive way. So with that said, with these appointments, I will be voting no.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Fleming.
I also agree with Alderman Fisk. My other concern is that—and I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry—but I think only one person on this commission lives south of Main Street, and I would have liked to see the commission made up of people from, you know, different neighborhoods. I think we have two people from, you know, we have four people, two groups of live in the same ward, so I would have liked to see more people from around the city because equity is all around and it's experienced different depending on where you live and a lot of different things, so unfortunately I will also be voting no.
Okay, all right, thank you, Alderman Fleming. I'll just say, as the person that put folks forward, we had a wonderful group of people that applied to be on the Equity and Empowerment Commission. We had close to 30, 30 people. And, you know, I worked hard, I worked closely with Pat Effiem, our empowerment and equity coordinator, to look closely at all of these applications. And I think we've put together a really representative group of the community. And, you know, we've got people on this commission who represent a lot of the different organizations that people had sort of come before the council and said, hey, make sure that, you know, you've got folks here who really understand the Moran Center, or people here that, you know, understand city government, which I think we have here. And we all are sort of embarking on trying to, you know, bring more equity to all aspects of our city government. So I think we've got a good group here in these nine. I appreciate everyone that applied. It's always tough whenever we're putting people forward because everyone is really qualified to be on here. But I think this is a good group, initial group, to kick off this really important commission. So seeing no lights, could we go ahead and take a roll on this since I know we have some differences of opinions, City Clerk?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Yep.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Rainey. I'm sorry, Ravel.
Okay, so Equity and Empowerment Commission, congratulations, we have one on a six to two vote. Let's go ahead and move down to Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. Is there a motion to move these two candidates?
I still have one.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Alderman Ravel.
Well, on behalf of the Housing and Homelessness Commission, I would like to ask the council for their approval of basically an ex officio member of the Housing and Homelessness Commission to also be part of this subcommittee. The commission was very involved in the original passage, well, I guess the revision of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance a couple of years ago. Their current powers and duties, as approved in the revised description of the commission tonight, talks about providing guidance on the implementation of this ordinance, and so there just seems to me that's a very important voice to have at the table to talk about, to be part of the discussion. But they're not asking—the commission's not asking to have yet another official member of the committee, but rather just to be more than just a member of the public watching. So I— so move.
Second.
Second.
So the idea is just an ex officio member from the Housing and Homelessness Commission attending this meeting.
Referring to rules. I should have brought that up at rules.
Okay.
Now we'll have to wait.
Sorry.
It's all right, okay. So we will—we can go ahead and just put that on the rules, I guess, the next time we have a Rules Committee. Okay, no worries. Alderman Ravel, I wouldn't have known either. And, okay, and then Alderman Rainey.
Could you just run down those who you have recommended so far?
So, yeah, on the committee so far, besides the— we have the aldermen, okay, the four of you that are on here, and I'll be pressed to remember, I presume you guys all know. And then we added to that Lynn Robinson, okay, who—the Robinson family owns a lot of apartments and other things here in Evanston. Kent Swanson, who is a developer and also sort of a real estate finance person. And then the third one was—
Jolene.
Jolene Sol was our third one, and then these two members. Okay, so with the four aldermen, the three that I just mentioned, and these two members, that gives you an Inclusionary Housing Subcommittee of nine people, which is what the—
We're gonna quit at that, right?
Well, that's it. That's what we got. What I'd like to do is ask the city manager to get—to have staff set that up, so as soon as we all get back from the holidays, we can have that first meeting. Thank you. Okay, so we need to take a—I think we— do we have a motion and a second on these two? Okay, all in favor?
The show and we're some favorites.
Can I do it all? We're not doing well. Let's take a roll on this, City Clerk, real quick. It'll be our last of the day.
Alderman Rainey.
I'm gonna vote yes.
Alderman Fleming.
Yes.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Ravel.
All right, the Inclusionary Housing Subcommittee appointees pass eight to zero. Call of the wards. Let's go ahead and start with you, Alderman Rainey.
So I want to say that I can't think of anything more disappointing than Evanston Township High School Administration and Board tonight. I don't know what happened tonight, but they had before them tonight the most anti-inclusionary proposal to require—to require the most insensitive, I'm sure unconstitutional provision to require permission for every single board member to get permission from some administrative person to allow any any transfer of emails to a constituent.
Oh, that's crazy. I know that one.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. The most horrible thing. I had a conversation with Jonathan Baum, who said he's going to do everything just— anyway, that plus their intruding on our zoning and you all supporting it is just just more than I can hardly tolerate. So it's not been a good night for me on that score. But congratulations on the budget. I thought we did a nice job on the budget until the very end, and I think people wimped out on the city clerk's budget. But that's okay. Hopefully, he'll do a really good job. And I thought Peter—I thought you had the best advice to him. You've got three more years to show us what you can do, and I think—I think in three years, it'll be a very interesting adventure.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming.
All right, I have a couple of things. I would like to make a referral. I would like the Public Works Department to prepare a report of the calls they have gotten in 2017 via 311 for sidewalk complaints, and I'd like to know what happened to them. Got it? So that goes to AP&amp;W, I think. All right, perfect.
All right.
Oh, Public Works—I'm not on that committee, though.
Send it to—
No, Public Works is gonna— yeah, Public Works, but he's gonna bring it back to—
Uh-uh.
He'll bring it back somewhere. Mr. Wally, can you help him figure out where he brings it back to?
We got it.
Thank you. Wait, I'm not done. I also have a thank you to the Ninth Ward residents. We had a holiday party, and we collected enough coats to distribute coats to Dawes, Oakton Shoot, and to the Adult Homeless Shelter, and I have a trunk full of blankets that are going to the shelter tomorrow.
Nice.
So we were able to give every kid who requested a coat a coat in three schools. So I'm very proud of the Ninth Ward. I know, it's great. Very proud of them. All right, I have one more quick thing. A thank you to the Police Department in North Shore Towing. There was a lady who was 93 years old, still driving, who had a flat tire, and some citizens had tried to help her, and they were unable, and I came over in all of my aldermatic superpowers and called the police, and they sent over in North Shore, and he changed the tire in like five minutes and didn't charge her. So I want to thank them for doing that.
That's so nice.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk.
So we all have that to look forward to. I can hardly wait till I'm 93. I think that's great. Okay, so on December 19th at 7:00 PM, there's the NU City Committee meeting here in the Aldermanic Library, so come to that. To all of my colleagues and everyone out there and staff, and Marty, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah. I know them all. I don't need any coaching. Yes, Happy Hanukkah and all that good stuff to everyone. Thanks so much.
Alderman Braithwaite.
All right. First, I'd like to wish our former mayor, Morton, a very happy 99 years old on this planet.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. She turned 99. So there's always a question between if she's 96, so she officially 99 this month. Still incredibly sharp and amazing example of service in this town, and we wish her many, many more years to come. This Thursday, December 14th, Thursday, in our usual place, District 65, I plan on hosting our last ward meeting for the year. We'll have some highlights, a couple of staff reports, and we'll have the staff and board representing Evanston Township High School to discuss their request for a special use in the I-2, Demstern Hardtree. And I think that's it.
Excellent, thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wilson.
Happy holidays to everybody, and I really want to give my sincere appreciation to the staff who did a great job through the budget process of compiling information, putting things together. I think Alderman Ru Simmons mentioned, in looking at what other communities are doing, we're doing an awful lot of things well, really, really well. And talking to other community leaders, I recently realized how well we're doing some of these things. But I also want to thank all of you who are up here with me, and also Alderman Wynn. This has been a very thoughtful and conscientious conversation about the budget. I'm grateful for that. I think that we collectively have focused on people, not on things, and that's, I think, a priority. It's the holiday season, so I meant to go home and get my Grinch tie, but I couldn't quite make it, but I like the way the Grinch wraps it up with, it's not about the bows and the ribbons, it's about—it's about the people being together and working together. And I think—I think that we accomplished that tonight and over the past few months, so I'm grateful for all that effort. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ru Simmons.
Thank you. Of course, I also wanted to wish Mayor Morton a very happy belated 99th birthday. That's just amazing. We have our Fifth Ward meeting, which is our holiday party. It's gonna be a great time. We have a light agenda, and we—the party will start at 7 o'clock until 8:30. We have a very generous sponsor in downtown Evanston as well as Northwestern University, so I'm hopeful—I have junior high school kids on my heart, I'm hoping that junior high school kids in the ward will come and bring your families. And we have a very special gift for you from downtown Evanston and from Northwestern University as well as other downtown Evanston businesses. It will be catered, and Santa Claus will be there, so I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Alderman Ru Simmons. Alderman Sufferton.
I would like to congratulate Sixth Ward resident Rob Coons on his Midwest Emmy Award for his work for Northwestern, and Sixth Ward native Mike Low for his five Emmy Awards, bringing his career total to 21.
Wow, wow.
All right.
A lot of talent there in the Sixth Ward. Alderman Ravel, can you top that?
No, I'm sorry. We'll have—we'll get cracking. Wait until next year. But in the meantime, just happy holiday wishes to my colleagues here at the dais and everybody still watching and faithful those of you still in the audience, and I'll see you all next year.
Yeah, and I just want—I just have a big thanks to the media that covers our City Council meeting, to you, Bill Smith, and— city council meeting, to you, Bill Smith, and to you, Sean Jones, and to you, Dan Coyne, and what you do on Facebook Live. I know there are a lot of people out there that appreciate the work that all of you guys do. And, and a big thank you to Kim for coming to your very first city council meeting here and getting up today and speaking and, and suggesting, a good suggestion to the council. So welcome to Evanston. Thank, thank you, everyone. Do I have a, a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy holidays, everybody. See you in 2018.